I'm sorry, I didn't see the text. Are you good to go?
Yeah, Mike- Michael said just use the computer one. I think so, but for some reason I'm not getting it to come on YouTube streaming and I'm live.
Hmm, so it shows that you are, it says streaming live in the box.
Yup. So it is good?
Yup.
Okay. But...
Okay, I want to bring the- everyone, I want to make sure that I say thank you to all of you for coming this evening. Uh, please make sure that your cellphones are out of the unit or shut off. And please rise and join me in the national- in a quick week.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to thank you all for- for coming this evening to, uh... I want to thank you all for being here this evening to assist us in our county business. And Patty, would you please do roll?
Come on in.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Don.
Here. Uh, are there any conflicts of interest by any of the commissioners?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. I do not. I need approval of the agenda for this evening.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add an executive session for the personnel issue. Just briefly to speak on the issue.
Got you underneath number eighteen.
Yes. And then I don't believe- did anybody show up for- from pathways?
Will was not going to show up this evening.
So do we want to delete item number?
Delete that.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve with the changes.
I second.
I have a motion by Dan and second by Ryan to approve the agenda for this evening as amended.
Aye.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now's the time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in a forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. And I would like to add a comment to that. Uh, being we have such a huge crowd here this evening and I'm sure everyone wants to speak. Um, Wanda is going to be our timekeeper and we are going to specifically stick to that three-minute timeline.
And, and, Mr. Chair, we get a lot of new people too, so I know they're probably here for specific items. Uh, we will allow- we will allow public comment at that time, but they don't...
Correct.
Just so- just so they're aware.
So do we have anybody that wants to speak now? Uh, for that's public comment. I am seeing none. Come- nobody coming forward? Up, there comes, I see a hand raised and we'll give her the three minutes.
There's a button on the side to turn your microphone on.
Hi, my name's Christie Conway and I live in Northern Yount County. Um, I just wanted to come up because I can't stay for the whole meeting later, but I wanted to say that I'm asking you guys to support Article twenty-six changes as proposed. The wind task force, they did an amazing job. Lots of hours of research went into it. They listened to a lot of different sides and we're just asking that you guys would honor their work. And that you would go ahead and honor the people who've come in and spoken to them and do the best thing for this county.
Thank you.
What was your name? Christie Conway.
Okay, I have Roger. Did you want to speak now or you want to wait till later? Later? Okay. Okay, anyone else want to speak now at this time? I see none. Uh, public comment at this time will be closed.
No.
I'm sorry.
I- I make a motion to be open.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Go.
I am Anita O'Gorman and I'd like to speak for the people of my community. I would like to speak on the issue of the wind towers. I object to them as we have, I think, the majority of those people who are here, the large group here will tell you, they are a problem. They will be interfering with the safety and of our community, our animals, our people, and the livestock in the area. I had a written up a statement that I was going to present, but I don't think it's necessary. If you were to take the time to study and learn all of the problems that they have caused in other areas, I think you would probably find out that there's a lot of problems caused by them. If you have twenty years of- of their wind blowing and they only are blowing thirty to forty percent of the time, at the end of that time, you have to have them taken down and then they don't usually do a very good job of taking them down and the results is left up to the, uh, landowner. And that gets to be a problem for the landowner, which is not really a very successful thing. The landowner is left with a big problem, not the company that put it in. And the contract said that they will- they will take care of the- the district, whatever you call it, when they take the thing down. But I still think that you have to consider the, um, the shaking of the thing, the hum, the- all of the things that are affected within five-mile radius. And it is a detriment to our entire community and all of those who are around. And I forgot my paper, so I can't give you all of the details I'm talking about, but if you wanted to check them out, you could find, I really have a lot of pieces that I didn't bring with me. Thank you. I just want to say that I object and I think that the majority of the people in this group tell you that they object to the wind towers that are trying to get started. And I think that they've been here and been applying for the permits to get them. And I want to say I- I object to.
Ma'am, can you- can you restate your name?
Anita O'Gorman.
Thank you. So at this time, is there anyone else that would like to present public comment at this time?
My name's Jake McManus. I'm also against the wind turbines and support Article twenty-six and I urge you to also. I don't know if you guys are aware, but Next Era is in quite a few lawsuits. They are in lawsuits, one lawsuit with their shareholders for legal campaign financing. They are in a lawsuit with their, um, with four of the companies that they do business with for some breaches of contracts. And there are plenty of lawsuits they are in with landowners that are participating with wind turbines and non-participating with wind turbines. So I just want you to support Article twenty-six.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? If there's anyone in the back out there, I think the TV is functioning now. Anyone back there want to speak now? Going once, going twice, going three times, public comment is closed. There's going to be- there's going to be more public comments available later in the meeting, so...
There's a twenty-second delay, so we'll stay there.
Okay. Public comment is closed. Next item on the agenda, six-ten, we're right on time. Approved Sundance Ridge Road District election. Patty, would you like to... I haven't seen her.
Um, there was election in June.
Your microphone.
Um, we had a, um, election for the Sundance Ridge Road District and it was approved. Nine fifteen.
And for- for you guys at home, um, it's a road district and that means that your secondary property taxes, instead of going to the county or the organized township, now go to this road district. But the county still has to maintain the segment on the road, basically. And this is, uh, once this is approved like this, we have no choice. We have to, we have to approve it, you know, for our state's attorney, so...
You mean, once the election?
Once the election is over and it passes, it's a ministerial task and we're required to approve it, so...
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the Sundance Ridge Road District. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Is Jeremy here?
Jeremy. Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Jeremy, I need to come on. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, but since you're here, we're gonna move on.
Yeah, that's- this is...
No.
No. Welcome.
Hey, guys. I guess I'm requesting, uh, to vacate a right-of-way so I can put up the building. Wondering what other options I have, being that it's, uh, on our own stand or place. Been trying to, I mean, you're even trying to work it out. Wondering- wondering if there's even an option where I could put a closure to the section line. So where I have the building laid out be, um, is way off compared to where we need to. I wasn't aware of the section line, I guess.
Do you want to give it up and have it?
I- I have a bunch of paperwork.
You have- you have it in the hat, I think.
So- so Gary, it looks like the section line is running really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, Gary, yeah. Um, it looks like that there's a section line running close- really close to Highway fifty. Yeah, I would, uh, would have guessed that there'd be a section line there. And- and this is kind of your recommendation, vacate this section line or what?
Yeah, he basically, uh, it wouldn't hurt anything either way. And the state doesn't deal with vacations when they- when they do their outlines of their roads. But, um...
You own property on both sides.
Both sides, yeah.
To me, it just makes sense.
Yeah, it- it makes sense and it would definitely help them with this setback issue for the building so they can get trucks in and out.
Yeah, you mean, if I could put it where I originally wanted to, it- the building won't be sitting on the section line, but it'll be closed.
No.
You know, I don't know for sure. The building's been here for a month already and we just kind of got put on hold. Just trying to do- doing the right thing and...
Yep.
So this, uh, I was gonna- I was looking at the section line. Didn't you have quite a bit of property along the highway there?
Yeah.
The vacation, the section- section line for that entire, for the right-of-way along that entire section line for all the different properties?
Probably just that section seventeen, probably.
Uh, that's what I was questioning, like, just for that one parcel where you put the building or all of it? Because I mean, it does- the right-of-way doesn't make any difference.
No, no. So like, I mean, what I understand is the goal is against the zoning board or something in September in order to vacate this or...
I think it would just...
No, no, they- you guys sent an approved petition tonight. And then it'll be helpful if you have a tire. And then, then we'll have a hearing and they'll prove it then at the next meeting. We'll try to get it in there. Well, no, we'll try to get it at the next meeting. Because I'll have stuff. Two weeks. So it's the first meeting in September.
Okay. So...
Sorry, guys. We published twice for two consecutive weeks and then we can have a hearing after that.
So it'll be the first meeting in September.
So like what you said, September third, September third?
Yes.
So basically, we'll have to wait till then. But after that, it should, it's a problem.
Rob, Rob, do you need us to approve this tonight then so you can advertise, is that correct?
All right, sorry, I can't hear you. You're kind of touching out.
Do you need us to approve tonight so- for the petition so that we can get it advertised?
Yes.
Okay. I'd move a...
Have you else move it? Second.
Petition, make sure it was done correctly and we'll get it in the public's eye. And then just publish two consecutive weeks and then we can have another hearing.
So I have a- I have a motion by Dan, second by Ryan to approve the, uh, petition to vacate section line and any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. See you in a couple of weeks. See you in a couple of weeks.
Yup.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Yup.
Staffing schedule change, ambulance, Eric. Good evening. I won't take up a lot of your time, just wanted to bring it to your attention. Uh, our billing ladies have requested a little bit of a schedule, uh, change for their side of it. Uh, they'd like to work, there's split me thirty-five hours. We'd like to work a thirty-nine hour week one week and a thirty-one hour week the next week, alternating so we can have every other Friday off. I know it's my job as department head to make that determination. However, it says in the county handbook, I have to present it out to the county commission, so I'm just making sure I'm playing by the rules and bringing it to your attention, making sure there's no, uh, questions to follow up. And just also give you a heads up, the billing ladies, Brittany Ray and Lisa have done phenomenal job. It was reported this morning that with the new hiring house, they've had a hundred percent pass-through for insurance companies coming back, so they're really getting that system into place, so...
I would move approval of the staffing schedule change.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve the staffing schedule change. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Captain, thanks, Eric. Your motion to adjourn into...
No, we have to wait till six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
We can do...
We have fifteen minutes, can we do the claims?
To do travel reimbursement rates.
There you go.
For meeting minutes.
Item number fifteen, travel reimbursement rate.
We just want to start maybe at twelve and then we just...
Okay, alright. Meeting minutes, July sixteen and July twenty-fourth. Can I get the motion for sixteen first?
I would move to approve the meeting minutes for July sixteen, twenty-twenty-four.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve the July sixteenth meeting minutes. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now I'd like a motion for July twenty-four meeting minutes. Move approval of the minutes for July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Don, to approve the July twenty-four meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We'll do our claims for...
I would move to approve claims. Provided that my office is here for the...
Second.
And I just double-checked, double there.
I didn't- I didn't see anyone.
I didn't see any either, but...
Okay. I have a motion by Wanda, second by Don, to approve claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. July twenty-four payroll.
I would move approval of the July twenty-twenty-four payment.
A motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve July twenty-twenty-four payroll. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Budgeted cash transfer, OEM to the highway.
This is a budgeted cash transfer to the highway department and emergency management. It gives you one motion. One is for one million dollars and one is for one hundred thousand.
I would move to approve the budgeted cash transfer for the Department of Emergency Management, Highway Department, one for one million and one for one hundred thousand.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to approve the budgeted cash transfer from the Office of Emergency Management to the highway department. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And now we have the abatement.
And it's just, uh, veterans, you know, like... And the law to the abatement is two thousand and eighteen dollars and sixty-nine cents.
And that says for the same...
The same.
And by- and by law, just so everybody realizes, if, uh, they don't meet the deadline, but they meet otherwise, it's approved, which is on there, so... I- I'd move approval of the abatement.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to approve the abatement of two thousand and eighteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Travel reimbursement.
Um, this is just an increase in the trouble for, um, employees to go to workshops or, um, to points, like...
That's these, uh, state rates.
Yep.
And Patty, are we- would we be able to make a motion just from here on out to follow the state rates? Or would you recommend that we just update our rates from the state tax? What would you be...
Uh, I think we should just do it when it comes.
Okay. Now, this- this makes sense to, um, that we know gas and everything else costs more. Our employees go to the United States. I'd, uh, I'd move approval of, uh, to follow the state reimbursement rates.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the state recommended sixty-five cents a mile for travel reimbursement. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, we're still at it.
You're too efficient, John.
Can't help it.
No, that's it all. So everybody's aware, we got about seven minutes before we can officiate the video.
Commissioner updates? Commission updates? Wanda, you got any, of course?
No. No, I do not.
Ryan?
Well, I got, uh, the, uh, library's got heat. I know where that door's at. The National Foundation will be reviewing that and, uh, it'll also be presented to the city commission on your next meeting, uh, next Thursday.
Don?
None.
Dan?
Now, just, uh, state convention is coming up in September. For those of you guys who can attend, should be some good workshops.
I have hotels and, um, if you just let me know if you're going or not, so I can be okay.
Wait, would we- would we let you fill that in fast?
Yes.
And do you want to reschedule that early date for that week?
Yes, we do, because that- that- that will be on Tuesday, we'll be going to that meeting for a regular...
No, because we'll leave on, because I've got moved to Monday. Monday, night and two o'clock.
Do we just move back to the following Thursday? For that week?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we're- we're nine to the next day.
July?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Does that have to be a motion? Rock's going on?
Yes.
Does that still have to be a motion, Rob? Or can they just...
Do you need a motion to reschedule that seventeenth meeting to the nineteenth?
Turn on the microphone.
We do not need a motion. Sorry, we don't need a motion either. Sorry, that's the thing, you have to do it, you don't have to make a motion.
He said we do not need a motion. So we can- will we get the nineteenth one?
So unless- unless we have somebody else come, we'll discuss it next week. At this time, I would, uh, propose a motion for a five-minute break.
I would approve for a five-minute break.
Second.
A motion by Wanda, second by Don. All in favor, aye?
We'll see, sir.
You're gonna learn a lot sitting there with these two.
I just got asked to do this.
Fifty bucks just to sit here, I don't care.
Does that come with the chair though?
Right. I got a text at work, my full-time job. You want to make it quick, easy fifty bucks? I didn't know it was gonna be this hard. Is that why the pole falls over? This is the first one I've ever been to. Yeah, me too. I walked in. Can I just tell one? I'm like, what the hell?
Is Mike taking a break or is he going home?
Why are we sitting here? Well, I got told an hour and a half, so... If it's over that, you get to tell them to pass the motion if it's over, what you were told you did. It's Monday. I don't know who's in charge of this.
How long did they say?
I'd rather do my football games I do for a long... I'd rather do my football games I do for them. That's entertainment, this is boring.
No. It's all standing.
They could do what's going on themselves. So what, all these people are going out, something to say no?
I hope so.
Well, I did... I asked the person that's in charge of this, I was like, what am I supposed to do during the executive session? Am I supposed to just pull up and leave, or what?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's livestream.
What did you say, I'm sorry?
Oh, it's just livestream on YouTube for them.
Oh.
One of, five-star streaming. I mean, they do the Yankton Bucks football and everything, so. We got seven people watching.
I bet you that will pick up.
Oh, I sh... Everybody, it's the first half hour, you're probably just sleeping.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Exactly.
Probably give them five minutes, it's gonna take ten minutes to get everybody to sit back down.
That's just because everything went quick. So what if you have a sad time, just move it forward five minutes? Oh, I think the cop's just here because it's some public figure, you know? Can't take any chances nowadays. There goes a hundred twenty bucks for county money?
Yeah, no kidding.
I don't know what they're making now, I know a regular cop is making something twenty-eight here now.
Really?
So I'm sure sheriff is a little more. I know highway patrol's thirty-something, other than one or something. Pretty explains why I see at least five of them when I leave work, Jesus. Work after shave there right on the highway, they're just all over the place there.
Really?
Yeah. But wintertime, you don't see them.
Because they have to wear them.
Don't know. Story's already done. They're getting...
A motion by Wanda, second by Ryan. Order, please? Don't make me get the ballot, huh? Motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to go back into exec, into regular session. And now I entertain a motion to go into board of adjustments.
Let's vote.
I'm sorry.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Will we go into the board of adjustments?
Second. A motion by Don, second by Ryan, to go into the board of adjustments. Hearing...
All in favor?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
We have a couple of conditional use permit requests tonight. Wildwood Christian Retreat Center is requesting a conditional use permit in an eight district for Article five, Section five oh nine, Article eighteen, Section eighteen oh seven, and Article nineteen, Section nineteen oh seven. Applicant wishes to create a retreat center where Christian leaders can come for sabbatical and church staff to retreat. Said property is legally described as southeast quarter of Section eleven. Township ninety-five North, range fifty-six West, and the fifth Prince Bogaret Inn, Yankton County, South Dakota. E nine one one address is two nine nine zero one four thirty-ninth Avenue, Utica, and I believe the applicant's in the hallway.
He goes there, we can fill the map up for us in case we need... Can I have the applicant step forward, please?
Hi, can we do the circuit before you guys? Yeah, so we're looking to, um, purchase the property for a nonprofit to be able to use it to build, well, not build, utilize the current facility because that has for a Christian retreat center for, like, pastors and other Christian nonprofits who years to come away and have sabbatical. So for the first twelve months, there would be no changes to the current property. And then in the second phase, we plan on adding, I think we have ten at max, um, like, single cabins for people to add more space and capacity to have more people come out and do those sabbaticals. And that's the premise of what we're asking the conditional use permit is to go to use it for that purpose, um, rather than its current use.
Any questions at this time? Question?
What happens if, uh... You, you would apply to go off the tax... But we have property off the tax, which you would.
No, no, no. Um, I was nodding to your question. Um, at this time, we don't have any plans to remove it from the taxes. Um, I think in our last meeting, we mentioned that we didn't know what the rules were for that, but that, that wasn't necessarily our plan, if that was the, what was needed to keep it, um, and to get the use for what we needed to do, we're happy to pay taxes, we're not really opposed to that.
Yeah, and the other thing, so I think, sorry, only some of you guys were here last time when we were here. Uh, what was brought up before is that there is an actual statute under South Dakota law that Christian nonprofits are non-taxable. Again, my husband and I, at most times, even consider that that was, if we have to pay taxes on the land, and so be it, whereas they also do that. For us, this is really just about being able to serve a mass amount of people.
I, I believe last time we also had some discussion about your, uh, financial plan.
Yeah.
You wanna, uh, tell us, uh, any, any changes in that that you made, or...
Sure. I mean, here what? When we were here the last time, we were told we actually didn't even need to supply a business plan, but we had done that anyway, so that the town and everybody could know a little bit more about what we were doing. Um, that, that portion of our plan wasn't even in the paperwork that we had supplied. Um, there was a, a kind gentleman who came up and said, you know, I don't like your, I don't like the plan I read. We wanted to be more thorough. We did have more thorough information for that, that we did bring along with us as well, but that wasn't a part of the original ask of us in coming here for conditional use permit. That was just about, to be honest, that you guys just have more awareness of what we were trying to do to serve this town and serve the people who will come and utilize the facility so they can go out and serve at greater capacity. But you do have that, correct?
Yeah, but if I may add, um, to the point of financial stability, this isn't a business that's going to be some cash flow positive scenario. It's a nonprofit, so we're going to have to go and campaign with people and seek donations.
We'd buy the way.
Right, and the only way that would work long-term is that large donors are found that are passionate about the mission and pay off the overhead of the land, and then it's ready, set, go.
So at this date, you wanna tell us how successful we've been at that?
How successful we've been at getting donors?
Yes.
We've been having a lot of conversations. At this point, we're at four or five donors. Um, but we're not looking for, um, a bunch of them. We're looking for specific donors that are looking to donate a larger amount.
And just to give kind of context, last week, I met with the National Christian Association throughout the country. I met with the president of Jesus Week for Christ. I met with a ton of different church organizations throughout South Dakota. So we are just providing a service. We, we really believe it's important for people who are in service of others to be filled so that they can serve at greater capacity. I mean, the, the burnout rate is wild. Um, but it would take one donor to really kind of move this along. My husband and I have committed financially on purpose to twenty percent of our proceeds to both of our companies to also be able to give back to Wildwood to that being dumped in. Sometimes our allocations are thousands, sometimes they're hundreds of thousands. So it's possible that we also have the capacity to do that on our own. The financial structure that we set with the Eastmans was specifically to have access to the land with full payment upfront for the first year. And then that is just for if, for some reason, we needed to go and get a bank loan for the rest of the amount, we just need to show twelve months of profit payments. So really, this is all set up to win. If at the end of the day, nothing happened, don't just go back to the same way it was before until the land is paid in full, which also will bless another nonprofit. Um, until that, that time, we won't be building or doing anything into phase two at all. Um, we want it to be cash flow positive, that's my business mind, uh, before we would continue to build upon the land in such a manner.
Really quickly, I just, there was a question about road access and easements, and do you, do you have them? I noticed it's not directly connected to public road. This little, uh, lane kind of meanders through another property, do you have all that sorted out with...
You wanna tell them the conversation with Miles?
Yeah, when I spoke to Miles about that post, he said that the easements have all been in place so that there shouldn't be a change. But again, kind of to our conversations with the questions from other neighbors, our goal is to be a blessing and, uh, help build up roads around that place, not, not be a burden or take away from anyone. So if there's any way that we can do that, we wanna be a part of that. But, um, including specifically when there are other easements that go through that property line for other people to their cabins, maybe that's something that stays in place as well, so.
I have a question about your cabins. Have you figured out the septic systems that you're gonna put in, or you're gonna need?
Only no, because we're not there yet, and I'll let my husband get a little bit more into that. That's phase two, and we'll also have to be coming back to you guys for exit approvals, right? So phase one is full land acquisitions, right, and then operational cost. Phase two is the build out of those six to eight small sabbatical cabins, one in a person, and then a, um, chapel, and then two additional structures to provide if there was a, um, a one group that wanted to have their own private study. Um, but all of that stuff will be done, obviously, we'll have to submit it to the county for approval and all of that. Our interest is really to add to the land, so everybody that even stays there will be planting trees up every single time that they stay, on and on. This is a private operation, so it's important for us that we just take a step, right? Like, our job is to take a step. I have quite a few friends who have done a lot of land deals where they built something, and then all of a sudden the market crashed and they couldn't sell it off fast enough, right? So for us, this is about being smart and sustainable, but also blessing others.
To answer your question specifically of septic, one of our board members is a developer, um, a land developer and a real estate agent, so they will be able to, um, see if there's one that they could make it tonight. But we do have people on, on our team who have that experience, so that'll be something we'll have to develop over time.
We also did build, in leaving, a connection with somebody locally who hasn't built there, who this country's been pretty much here. Uh, who, who will have conversations with as well, that are more familiar with this area. So our board member is also in development in this region, so it's familiar kind of how some of these structures and functions work. Um, and he's learned a lot, he's supposed to say that during the process. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat.
Okay, as far as...
And saying, you know, given you're gonna have cabins, you're gonna have people staying there overnight, and it's almost quasi-like campground, quasi-like hotel, you're probably looking at a commercial septic system that you have to...
And this developer is developing the cabins for the sabbatical idea?
No, we actually have not acquired the person to do that yet. We are in talks with several people, specifically those who have been on the board, it doesn't hurt us, right, to be able to have more data and information. One thing, as you get to know us, is that we want the best, and we also love local. So it is important for us that we're connecting with people locally who also have vested interests in the community for us to be able to kind of come along with the community. This is, this is not an asylum, this isn't about us, this is about others, right? So how can we bless the community, how can we bless people in the public area? All that stuff takes one step at a time, right? So I don't have all the answers in front of me.
So, we approved this yet, um, if you get to phase two, you still have to come back and build a comment for the cabins?
Correct.
And so forth, right? Because that actually would mostly just through, straight, straight through the money, the money office, right?
Correct, and you certainly could put a condition on that they have to meet CUP and our requirements. And, but yeah, the, the cabins, cabins would have to be permitted, and if, um, if they change their plan, originally, we were talking ten to twelve people in cabins. If they change their plan, then they have to come back into there.
For a modification of the season.
Correct.
And then if, I notice that in your plan, you're leasing for this first year. If it actually fails, you don't purchase the property, you don't get the phase two, the CUP would actually just kind of expire.
If it's not used for a year, it would just go away.
The land would still be in the Eastman's name in that scenario. And so that lease purchase is going towards...
Okay, frankly, the plan that we set up was to make sure that no one lost, right? I mean, this, this is an act of faith for Miles and his family to step up and say, you know what? This is awesome, we wanna be a part of it. An act of faith for you guys, because you sit here and even listen to what we're saying, right?
So, one last question, so you have, it's gonna be re-... You're gonna have people there on weekends or weeks or whatever. Is there, is, is there a plan in, is the plan there that it's actually gonna be occupied the whole year?
That would be awesome. We, I mean, there are different structures...
Season, where there was gonna be offering it, I think there would be different times where we would have, um, self-hosted, like, planned ones, maybe other attached, it would be solo. There might be other organizations that, like a church with all of its executive staff might come and rent out the facility for...
The whole facility.
Weekend or something at a time, but there's not gonna be specific seasons on the off-season or on-season.
And also note, there will be facility maintenance and management, there will also be cameras on site. So this is not just, you know, free-floating facilities, your B and B, where we're letting people kind of come and go.
I think you kind of touched on my next question, Paul, was that you were really focused only on retreats and serving religious organizations, you're not looking at different weddings?
No, Christian, we're just Christians.
Is there any plan to build a church on this property?
No, this...
And I, you know, we have a similar property, uh, Broom Tree, less than ten miles from that. It's a religious tree that we, you know, worked, looked at then when...
Yeah, it's a Catholic organization, they just don't offer guidance, sabbatical, or things like that, that can be retrieved out from corporate stadiums. But there's not really anything like this within thousands of miles.
I think that Broom Tree offers something similar to a specific demographic, where ours would be more...
So I guess, um, now my concern is, is does the property that you're looking at purchasing is approximately a hundred and eighty acres, is that correct? So you mentioned before that you're not planning on taking that property off of the tax rule. And is there a way that we can... And is there a way that we could put a stipulation in the CUP that that would not happen? Because my concern is, is you're gonna, you're gonna purchase the property in a year, and then you're gonna apply for the religious exemption, and then that's gonna take a hundred and eighty acres off of the property tax rule in Yangton County.
Right now, and I'm just speaking freely, right now the taxes on that property in full are like eight thousand dollars. I pay more than that at my house right now. So we are open to paying it if that's what we need to do to be able to serve a lot of people, and just in general. Obviously, from the code, I don't know.
Do you explain it, looking for a free ride or to avoid taxes?
I understand, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Both heartily. I'm just concerned for twenty-four other thousand other people that are living in Yangton County.
Yeah, and by the way, we are too. Right, and yeah, I mean, that's the thing, is this isn't, this isn't about us. So if we have to pay the taxes, we'll pay the taxes.
Not a twenty-four thousand.
Rob, do you wanna address that question?
Sorry, I missed, I couldn't hear you.
So my concern is, is taking a hundred and eighty acres of ag land off of the tax rule for Yangton County. Is there a stipulation or a way that we could put into the CUP that property taxes will continue to be paid whether there's a religious exemption or not?
I don't think so. No, John.
Figured, I assumed you were gonna say that. I had to ask. Is there any further discussion from the commission? So at this time, I'll open up public comment. You can stay handy at the microphone in case there's any other questions. But I'd open up for a couple of public comment at this time to discuss this CUP for Wild Christian Retreat Center. Certainly. State your name and.
My name is Miles Teas, and this is the property that I actually own. I just wanna say that I support this project. I think this is a worthwhile project. This land is very marginal farmland. In fact, it's terrible farmland. I just planted sixty acres of beans just to watch them, kind of watch the work continue to produce some of the land. So it's not good land, but it's a perfect use for this type of project. Okay, it's peaceful, it's calm, it's beautiful. I mean, I'll bias, of course, but I think it's one of the most beautiful properties in Yangton County. And so I really think that I would encourage the commission to, you know, look beyond a nine thousand dollar tax base, be sure that I've been paying forever. And I think, you know, who knows how that all shakes out, but for the benefit it brings to the community, for the people it's gonna serve, I trust the Bilkey family here, they're good people. And so I strongly encourage the commission to allow for this exemption, allow this process to continue. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this issue?
My name is Jan Clemish. The land we are discussing tonight, it butts my land. There's not a whole lot I wanna say, but I do want it on record. My husband, my family, we owned and operated a sporting place course for over forty years. And we have shoots on weekends, sometimes up to four days per shoot, eight to nine months out of the year. I want it to be noted that there will be noise, and you talk about your sabbaticals and you're walking through the, whatever the land. I don't want you to come back and say, you can't shoot guns on this weekend, 'cause I have people that are praying. And so I would just like you to take that into consideration also. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan.
So a question. So are you telling me you are opposed to it, or you're in favor of it?
I am very much opposed, and I am very happy to hear that they may not have to, nonprofits and steel pay tax, 'cause that affects a lot of people in Yangton County.
I have a question.
Yes.
Let's assume since you were there first, that you shoot guns nine months out of the year. Would it seem, would it be, would you be in favor of it if there was a permission that they couldn't later complain about the noise?
Well, that'd probably be a factor, and it is. But you know, when you're shooting, shooting guns, you got, you know, probably thirty people that shoot several hundred rounds in the valley, it's gonna go all over, you know?
Understood.
So I just want that in the records.
Just real quick, if you don't mind giving me some shooting lessons, I would love to come shoot with you. I have a terrible shot, but I love hunting and shooting, so I don't think that's any problem for us.
Hey, well, I just want you to understand though that, you know, the way I'm understanding it is you, you're gonna have trails and you're gonna have people walk around and be in a peaceful setting, and it may not be that way.
Appreciate it.
Further comments? Got one coming up here.
Trying to stay away.
David Ellis. As a pastor myself, I have no objection to things that can be used to aid people who are in various kinds of ministry. But I think there's a lot of unverifiable ambiguity in what's being proposed here. And unless you can be assured that this is never gonna come off the tax rules, and I don't know how you're gonna do that. And my concern about that, I know a lot of people in the extended community that are under a heck of a lot of pressure for property taxes, and everyone in this room knows that. You take something like that off the rolls, it's gonna raise their taxes even further. Even the purchase of that place is probably going to raise our property taxes, because I'm told upstairs in the equalization office, that's why mine increased about forty-five percent this year. And it is beginning to bite. I'm retired, low income, I have no way to increase the resources to pay the continuing taxes. So unless you can take the ambiguity out of it, unless you can ensure that it's never gonna come off the tax rule, I would urge the commission to reject. Thank you.
My name is Michael Roach. I was also here with the original zoning committee meeting. I don't have anything against what these people are wanting to do. But I would suggest that if you approve this, and they do end up taking it off the tax rules, our property, my first home call's gonna be John Blackburn. And we're gonna do a five oh one C three and take it off. I've been doing leadership retreats for USC students for about ten years. And if that's not efficient, we'll find another way. Thank you.
Hey, Dan.
Yeah.
Wild Christian Retreat? That's the Wild Christian Retreat of North Town, or the, for the retreat for the.
Any other public comment? Forward.
My name is Randy Wayne. I'm a resident of Yangton County. I lived here about three years ago. Moved here three years ago. I lived in Wayne County, northeast of Rattan, middle of Turman. And I've lived there three or four years.
The issue, I've been speaking against these since this was proposed.
Sir, are we talking about the Wild Christian Retreat or Wind Farms?
I just, I'm.
If this is Wind Farms, you're too early.
You're too early. Plan on sticking around for a while.
Oh, I will. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on the Wild Christian Retreat Center? Please step forward. If not, public comment on this issue is over. Okay, public comment is closed. Any further discussion by the?
Yeah, Ms. Commissioner, I was just looking at our list of conditional use permit, and this is five oh nine, this is unlisted. So the first case is we're in murky water because it's not a conditional use we approve. Five oh seven, number eight is a church that could apply for conditional use for a church. Five oh seven, number twenty-eight is a park, which they could apply that. Or five oh seven, number thirty, private recreational area, which I think would have fit this. But they didn't. They applied for a religious exemption, something that we've never done. And my concern, you know, reading South Dakota codified law as property owned by religious societies and not used for religious purposes. Property owned by religious societies and used for a religious purpose is exempt from taxation. That's codified law. So if we approve it, you guys don't have to pay taxes. That's, that's the law. And you can, you know, if this conditional use will go with the land, if it's sold or anything happens in the future, it's off the tax rules and there's nothing to do about it if we approve it.
Well, actually, if it ever does go back to private, it does.
Yeah, if, if it does.
It's only off the tax rule clause, for religious purposes.
I think we have to remember that if it's not even there, then.
Yeah, exactly that one too. And section five oh nine does say that it's also on the basis of similarity of uses specifically listed already. And I think their case is very similar to several cases of, as you mentioned, recreational area church, multiple things that are similar to what they're doing. So there's a, I think, a case for applying that.
Yes, why?
Warrant. Speaking of tax rules, okay, this is an agricultural property, so it's agricultural. It's, tax basis at this moment is set by state. We have no control over it. And so it's just a formula. And in fact, actually, in the last few years, that tax has been dropping as the agricultural margin drops, so does the agricultural tax. And so that's one of those things, like, then purchasing the property is going to raise property assessments because it's an agricultural property, and the assessments on agricultural property are just done differently than, say, a house.
Wouldn't it change? Wouldn't it change from agricultural to something else because it's had cabins on it?
Well, it might not. If the majority of the use is still agricultural, it's still, still, if, for example, if they are still renting out a portion to be farmed out soybeans, it would stay agricultural. As well.
Would that be by percentage though?
Yeah, if you have the percentage of incomes.
Yeah.
And then on top of that, it's a moot point once they do go to the intent. So it doesn't matter what's agricultural or not.
That's the concern.
Yeah, that's the concern.
Of the majority of the folks, is that it will go from agricultural to tax-free.
And that'll be about seven thousand three hundred dollars off the tax rules from here in two years, in this case scenario.
Well, that means everybody, everybody up here has to pay a little bit more.
And my fear is, is there was a gentleman up here that stated a fact that if we pass this tonight, tomorrow morning, he's calling John Blackburn, and will apply for a tax exemption on his property.
But that's not.
Please, you just answered.
Paul's on saying, I'm neutral on this whole situation. And I'm not saying this because it's seven thousand dollars. That's not, that's not the case. If we do this, we're setting a precedence, and I've heard this commission set precedences over and over and over and over again. And I do not wanna do that tonight.
Ms. Chair, one final thing, and if we could pull up on the map, the road for this is on somebody else's property. And I believe there's no official easement filed in the registered deeds office. And my concern is, if you look at our zoning ordinance, Article nineteen, Section six, A, it says, "Before any conditional use is issued, the board of adjustment shall not make," so shall make written findings, certifying compliance with specific ruling governing individual conditional uses and satisfactory provisions and arranging that has been made concerning the following. Number one, is ingress and egress to the property. As far as I know, there is no easement to use that man's property to access this property. You can see the property there in red, and below is the road on somebody else's property. And I don't have any easement in front of me telling you that that is allowed.
Mr. Clemish was in the office, and they talked to Bill about this, and he seemed to be okay with it now. He put some drain tile in here years ago that he was concerned about, 'cause after he was told that, you know, they could just come up this and build another road up here. He didn't wanna mess with the drain tile, so that was the last comment that we were told.
Be that as it may, there's no easement on that property, and I just feel that that's, that's the number one on Article number six for a reason, and we're effectively granting that person access over somebody else's property, and no good news. And I know in the past that the planning, commission, and board of adjustment has not done that. So I'll just bring that up. That's a major point that I find.
So you're, you would like to see a recorded easement?
Well, I don't know how we can approve a conditional use permit when access is through another person's property. And if our zoning ordinance specifically says that.
In this case, the property would be a landlocked property, so.
No, there's a, there's a road, well, I'm familiar with this property, and there is a road in a section line that goes around.
Through another person's property?
What? No, on that property. That's not a landlocked property at all.
Okay.
So you see where that?
But I'm saying that there's landlocked properties that it happens all the time. If you have an easement, access to it, and cement access all the time, it's not unprecedented.
Talking to the landowner who owns that below, or hearing from him is that he was being a good neighbor. that he was being a neighbor, that they get built, because the terrain is going to sink there. And it would have been very expensive to put it on the section line. And that was somebody being neighborly. No reason to have a permanent agreement by a pre-merger. Giving advice, giving advice to that. I'm concerned that our zoning ordinance specifically says...
That we had already given rights to that.
Which is what you do.
How long has that road been there? That road, how long? How long does it take for a road to be there and be used like that on a daily basis before it's just an easement? It could be, it could not be already an easement just by default, depending on how expensive. But we don't...
We're not creating or denying anything.
We're not.
Further discussion?
I think that I hear that people would be more comfortable if they would agree in perpetuity that they would not make it a religious exemption. Then I think that would solve what I hear to be most of the issue. What about them doing it? I'm not saying we're doing it, they're doing it. What? They can make contracts, same way as anybody else. You have to go to the podiums, our ad hoc viewers in here.
I think we already mentioned this, but we're open-minded to paying the taxes. And that's not our intent to file, not. To your point, how do we effectively do that together? That's what I want to know. So if we can put our heads together and kind of figure it out, to not be a negative impact on anyone, so that we can be a blessing to others, that's our focus. So, for us, that's not an issue, that's not an issue. But specifically, is there a way to give a conditional use permit while still, like, farming it? Like, because we're still going to have to rent out the land. Minimize the first phase for the five months for the conditional use. So, it should and could stay farmed. I don't know, I'm asking, but I'm just saying, can the team work together? We're not trying to avoid taxes.
I can't. The commission can't, but they can contract with the county and say, we're not going to take over religious exemption. I can't make them do it, but they can do it here.
I think unfortunately, to apply for a private recreational...
Either way, we're going to find out.
Christian Retreat Center for Article 5, Section 5, so...
So would you consider doing advanced, apply for the CUP under just the recreational?
Yeah.
And then the Christian exemption would not... The Christian exemption at that point would not govern the order of...
I don't know if that even would make difference. Because it's about what their organization is, not about what we say the permit is about. You know? It's more about what the organization represents, not their religious or that's what government... Is it only if we apply for it then?
I believe so. I think it's only if you apply for it, if you only take that exemption.
No, it's automatically applied with CUP. I mean, if they meet that criteria, it's applied. So, if we have tax rules, none of the churches come to us, they meet that criteria, it's automatically applied. And I think it is a little different by what you're saying because the granting this is a conditional use permit. And what it's being used at is not necessarily what it's permitted for. And I'll give you an example. If I have, you know, buddies come over and dig in my garage, I don't have a CUP for the bar, but that's happening. And there are, you know, many examples out there where, you know, things have been going on, you know. People come in and...
But are they paying you to tie their alcohol?
They should. Yeah, but that's what I mean, and this is different because we're sorting off and saying this is a religious area right here. And then, like I said, 10-4-9, and that's my concern. Where I think there's better ways to private religion. And that's either an option under zoning ordinance under 507 number 50.
Do you want to apply as well?
I would say...
Into the microphone.
I would say a private recreational area is an area of open space other than a public park, owned and operated or maintained in part for profit by private indoor club or organization for members' use only. And they include therein one or more of the following activities: swimming, boating, picnics, tennis, and the list goes on and on. But does not include the racing of animals, motor vehicles, or snowmobiles, unless you're planning on doing that. I just think that's a lot better fit, and it solves all the problems of that.
Is that something, we want to postpone this? We need this CUP until the next meeting? And discuss it with the...
Does that have to go back before acquiring its own name? Because it's an amended, amended application.
Our, the board of adjustment, our options are to grant a conditional use permit, to grant with conditions or deny. Those are the three options that are afforded to the board.
Any further discussion? Maybe a motion on this subject?
I'm going to move for approval. That the developments are, have requirements of the DNR, development plan. And that we have a recorded easement for the road to access.
Motion by Ryan? A motion by Ryan? I would say that motion fails due to a...
As I said, I'm worried about the taxes because I have no doubt that there will be a flurry of people claiming that they are Christian groups. I can be a Christian group. But I'm not going to pay taxes anymore.
Get us to that point of view, if they're approval or denied, so.
Most you have to apply for, except, because there's warrants I have to...
You do have, you do have to apply, but the level is low.
Yeah, you have to apply.
You're not...
Yes, you have to. Fairly, fairly simple.
Okay, so at this time, we have a motion on the floor. If I don't get a second here in the next few seconds, the motion will go. For lack of a second.
I move that we deny the...
We got to do the other one first.
I thought there was already...
The motion is...
It has actually died.
The motion has died, I have a second, okay?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we deny the conditional use permit for Wild Christian Retreat Center.
I have a motion on the floor, denying the CUP for the Wild Christian Retreat Center.
I'll second that, I think it needs to be refiled under a different article.
I have a motion by Don, seconded by Wanda, to deny the CUP at this point in time. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same side? That motion ferries.
So if they're invited to reapply for the different...
Reapply as the recreational. But then I think it'll be no problem.
Okay, Gary, come next.
Second CUP is Fire and Ice is requesting a conditional use permit in Lakeside Commercial District for Article 11, Section 1109, Article 18, Section 1807, and Article 19, Section 1907. Actum wishes to erect a large gathering tent, host fans, and have a beer garden. Said property is legally described as law 25, Lewis and Clark Business Center, Section 62, Township 93 North, Range 56 West, and Fifth Principal Meridian. Yankton County, South Dakota, E911, address is 3804 West A Street, Yankton.
Is the evidence here?
Are you out there at all, or anyone from Fire and Ice?
He's not up there.
Can you give you some more information?
Give us a little more information.
So, basically, yeah, they were looking to put up a tent, having an event or two every year. They were talking, going, what the planning commission was talking about was seven a midnight with music. And hopefully, they direct traffic and things as best as they could to keep it moving out there. That was the majority, you can see what they had in the notes.
I think we also, we were planning to maybe talk about them having a maximum of four events.
Right.
And the building of a permanent fence on the northwest side.
Well, yes, and that's the...
And a traffic flow plan.
Yeah, that's all in the findings of facts. And so it basically helps keep people from parking on the neighbor's property.
The really big question I have is, what's the justification behind it? Not anything, the number of events they have. Why is that condition necessary?
Because there are a lot of people who get to that, have them on, like...
Meaning like, no, they have across the street.
Yeah, like, would you have a street?
So, how can we legally restrict one business?
They were there, we have nothing to do with that.
How can we legally restrict one business while the other business...
Just by... I can't argue with you, Ryan. You know?
Ryan, I think the difference is, the one across the street is zone commercial. And this is Lakeside Commercial, I think that might be part of the difference.
I guess I'm really confused by this because right across the street, we have all the same problems that they have conditions being placed on this business because of these problems. But right across the street, we have the same problems, but it's fine. It doesn't solve anything, and it really is just a matter, I don't know. I'm really opposed to these conditions, some of these conditions here.
Are you opposed to the four days or all of the conditions?
I'm particularly...
Four days.
I'm opposed to the time limit and the four events limit. Just because I don't...
They don't give...
I do not think that's a... I think that we are doing the county a disservice when we start to make these distinctions like this.
It says a maximum of four music events, would that be like a concert?
Well, it's any music. They have a band out there.
And I get kind of what Ryan's saying, I get what Don's saying. To Don's point, we don't probably want to have a humorous band there every single night. But we also need to think about what... And this is really our only opportunity in the conditional use process to put on conditions. And we all know in the past that conditional use permits were approved without conditions, and they led to problems.
Or conditions that were placed on conditional use permits led to problems. They can go both ways.
Would you be okay with...
We have a certified report.
You just want no limitations on the number of days of music?
Time and number of events, those are the two that I definitely...
So two in the mornings, okay?
What?
Two in the mornings, okay?
If the bar across the street can do two in the morning, I don't see why we have justification to limit another business to a similar thing right across the street.
It is two differences, one is commercial and one is Lakeside Commercial.
Well, the split side of that is the one across the street is closer to residents than this one. This one is next door to commercial property with less people hopefully sleeping.
There's a business right across the street. They're both equally protected, relatively smart.
I think what I'm saying is, you know, there is houses, you know, the bluff and that in that area, too. So, do you have a proposal? Like, I mean, you got these ones...
My proposal is to remove the maximum on events and the time on...
I personally...
Should we have public...
Oh, yeah, I think that's good.
Let's do a public comment on this.
That's why you're in charge.
Okay, we have someone to do the public comment.
I am Beth Keltzulas, I represent, my husband and I, we own the property north of Fire and Ice. And...
Up the hill?
Right behind them.
Okay.
And I think from our previous meetings, the people that were up on the bluff were concerned about the noise. We ourselves don't live there, so the noise isn't a big deal. And we agree, what's good for one should be good for the other. I get that. I think Fire and Ice came up with the four events because this was something new. And they were going to have a temporary tent. And they thought, they don't want to take it down and put it up that many times during the summer. Okay? So I don't think, if I remember correctly, and Mr. Kettering...
They came up with four days.
I don't think this got on...
Yeah, and so they came up with that number just because of the logistics of actually carrying it on. And as far as the band, if I'm not mistaken, Stringers and Cottonwood, they all stop at 12. So I think that's why they had set it at 12 as well. To us, okay, to us, it doesn't matter. Our big concern is the parking and the traffic. And we don't want at every event to be there policing that. And so they offered to put up the fence, and that's great. I don't think the fence is going to be along the whole area. I think it's just going to be for a part of it, just so you know that. And they have tried to work very, very well with us. We are, I'm not bad-mouthing them, I just want you to have all the facts. We're concerned about the garbage, you know, garbage on our property and how that will be handled. They have told us that they would pick that up. I think that's everything. Don's heard this over and over again, I'm sorry, Don.
Beth, there would be egress.
You got to come up, sir.
This is my husband.
State your name for the record.
Tom Keltzulas. They also, you know, they give claims 250 yards.
You have to talk louder, we're all...
Repeat your name first.
Tom Keltzulas. So my concern is also they'll be parking on the access road that's along there, probably parking in the ditch and all that too, but I guess Cottonwood parks in the ditch up there too, so I guess, yeah.
We're just trying to protect our property and we don't want any issues with them and if guidelines are set to begin with, then we won't have any problems with their neighbor. That's all.
And my thing is, if we really have this much problems with noise and music going late night, then we need to make an ordinance and have it uniformly applied, not make spot laws on certain people and have let other people do what they want. It's not okay. We have to be just.
And I think respectfully, that was brought up at the last meeting, that somebody brought that up and said, you know, that's not zoned residential, so we can't enforce that. I think that was brought up at the last meeting, so. Any questions for me, for us? Thank you for consideration.
I have one.
Yep, that's okay.
You're okay with the conditions as set forth by planning and zoning with the fence and the traffic flow plan and no parking on the frontage road and porta potties and a maximum of four events a year and the tent can only be up for four days for each music event?
We don't have a problem with the time because we agree with Mr. Heiney and as far as the events, that was what they brought up. And so we support business, we know everybody is out there trying to make a living, we just don't want it to infringe on our livelihood. And we have storage units there and we need to protect our renters and so that's what we're looking at. We know the traffic's going to be horrible there, it's already bad already and so, but we know, and anybody that's been out there knows, there is not room for two hundred and fifty cars. No way. So. So we can live with that, but I don't know about that parking. They're going to have to have several people out there monitoring that because as soon as one parks in the wrong spot here, somebody's going to park wrong over there and you can't keep up with that. So, thank you.
As I recall Atlantic zoning, he did say that they would have somebody monitoring the traffic flow, probably in the parking lot whenever they have an event.
He did.
Further public comments on this item? Twenty seconds. Going once, going twice, going three times? Yeah, probably would.
Question for Don, so you were there and you're saying that the applicant agreed to these conditions or these four music events?
Yeah, the discussion.
Yeah, I mean...
He brought up the dates. They were asked about how long it'd be out.
So if the applicant...
My problem here though, he said, "Well, we're only thinking four events," so you guys have the restriction of four events, and next you're like, "Wow, you're like fifth event in a row." Well, now they have to come up and get their CUP danger again. Are we using nitpick and legislating that very detail when we already know that he's really only thinking about the four? We didn't need that condition there.
I think though...
And again, eleven P M, again, alcohol rules, it's two P M, you can't sell anything after that. So everything definitely closes by then and that's where those natural restrictions go. That's the way all the other businesses operate down there and I feel like we are putting on restrictions, unnecessary restrictions onto a business and not attempting to do the best practices because we're trying to legislate for business.
We've read down a lot of conditional use permits, I know fireworks stand, you've got to commit that, and I'm only going to sell fireworks these days. We told them, "Why it'd be easier just getting gear around?" Now, if the customer wanted it this way and gave it that way, it'd be a different happening than it is now. But if the customer, which is a citizen, requests this or is fine with this, then I guess I'm fine with it as well.
Further discussion? Hearing none? Hearing none? May I get a motion to approve this CUP as presented?
I move approval of the CUP as presented.
Sent by motion by Don, seconded by Dan. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that we go back into regular session.
A motion by Wanda, seconded by Dan, move back into regular session.
A moment, we've all been on...
So, yeah, we have a proposed ordinance amendment to consider recommendation to adopt Yankton County Ordinance Twenty Twenty Amendment to Yankton County Ordinance Twenty Twenty Definitions and replace Article Twenty Six Wind Energy Conversion Systems with the updated Article Twenty Six per Ordinance Twenty Four Z N zero six.
I'd like to just go to public comment. Mike Welch. Want to get a call?
I do. Good evening. My name is Mike Welch. I served on your Wind Energy Task Force. I currently serve on the Yankton County Planning Commission that unanimously forwarded the proposed Wind Energy Ordinance to you. Regardless of the opinions of paid outside consultants, the proposed Article Twenty Six you are considering does not preclude wind energy development in Yankton County. However, it does protect and balance the rights of all citizens in Yankton County. Here's the bottom line. Large outside corporations offer landowners who lease their property for wind turbines money. They also offer the government money. On the other hand, people of Mayfield and Turkey Valley Townships, whose common sense tells them that a large wind plantation is a bad fit for Yankton County, have nothing to offer you. They don't have lawyers, scientists, university studies to back up their assertion. They don't even use slick PowerPoint presentations. At best, they draw pictures on a whiteboard. However, no matter how homespun their presentations have been for the last seven months, these citizens, our neighbors, have made it very clear that they do not want large wind energy conversion systems in Yankton County. The corporations have money and they flaunt it in the newspapers. All the people have is you. They've elected you. They have placed their trust in you. Look into the audience. Many of the people you see tonight are descendants of the pioneers who homesteaded this land. To an outside corporation, Yankton County is just another place on the map. To these people, this land is their only birthright. Don't sell their birthright to the highest bidder for the equivalent of a bowl of porridge. Because time is of the essence, you must act deliberately but quickly. I know you want to do the right thing.
Time.
I hope you'll vote to pass the Article Twenty Six without substantial amendment. I thank you for your time and I'll be here if you have a question.
Thanks, Mike. Roger Meyer.
My name is Roger Meyer. I don't come here as an advocate for wind. I think it's part of the future mix, just like oil and gas, nuclear, solar, and even the damage we have with less than time. It's all part of what's going to be our energy future. I really want to talk about property rights. There's a lot of discussion today about property rights. If you don't want a carbon pipeline on your property, you shouldn't have to have one. I think we can all agree with that. However, if you want to have a windmill on your property, somehow the county wants to now say, "You can't do that." I think you have the right to do with your property whatever you want to do with your property. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Oka and Andy.
Good day, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. My name is Oka and Andy. I'm a South Dakota resident. I'm a project director with Nexera Energy Resources and engineer with over twenty years of experience developing renewable energy projects. Nexera has actively participated and shared our concerns with the planning commission during the ordinance revision process. If Yankton County Commission were to approve the draft changes to Article Twenty Six proposed by the planning commission, it would prohibit any wind development in the county and take away the property rights of Yankton County landlords. I emailed you a letter yesterday that I prepared with a team of North America's leading experts in ordinance development for wind projects. They'll speak tonight and I encourage you to ask them questions about the material that has been provided. Our recommendations are not only in line with South Dakota P U C requirements, but also ensure protection of public health and safety and welfare of county residents, protect the private rights, private property rights of both participating and non-participating landowners, and still allow for responsible development of wind projects in the county. Based on over twenty years of scientific studies, experience developing and operating wind projects in counties across South Dakota, and the added protection of state side rules and regulations, we recommend that you adopt changes that align with South Dakota P U C requirements. Thank you for this.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? We'll kind of split this up and move on. Yes, sir.
Your turn.
Now's the time.
Just talk loud.
Okay, I will. I've got one question for the Nexera people.
Please give your name first.
Randy Wegman, Yankee County. Are your turbines going to be direct drive or box gear driven?
I think no, you should probably direct their questions.
Yeah.
That's a big information accountability though. But what I want to talk about tonight is national security. That's one thing that isn't brought up enough about the energy development in this country. In World War II, the Germans, the Nazi Germans, lost the war in Europe because they ran out of fuel. The Battle of the Bulge, the last major offensive in World War II, in December of nineteen forty-four, went in a month into January of forty-five. Massive tens of thousands, ten percent of the American soldiers died in war died in that battle. And the reason the Germans lost is because they ran out of fuel. They didn't have the fuel, that's true, sir, you can laugh, but that's true. They ran out of fuel, they had to get out of their tanks and fight as infantry and they lost. So what I'm seeing in the world right now, we have, last week, January twenty-fourth, there were four bombers that flew over Alaskan territory. They entered Alaskan territory, two of them were Chinese, two of them were Russian. An American fighter just went up and stopped them from entering directly into Alaska's airspace. We've got three Russian battleships in a fan hard recovers right now. There are a massive number, and they don't really know how many of these are going to rush and sub rings off a British post with nuke bombs. What's going on in the Middle East right now with Iran and Israel, the world is about crazy as I've seen it in my lifetime on seventy-four. My son is an Iraq war veteran, my grandson is an Afghanistan veteran. And I think we need a dependable electrical generation source in this country. I think it's very, very important. Now, the reason I ask if their turbines were direct drive or gearbox is because the infiltration of the Chinese into the wind turbine production. If they're direct drive, that's a relatively new technology. They're much more efficient with the old gearbox systems, it takes less people to work on them. But they have a magnetic generation system that works with a rare earth product that I believe is called neogenium. Ninety percent of that is mined in China. And these new turbine systems, the software that runs them is all produced by Chinese companies. So if we were to get into a major world war, I don't know, the world's pretty ready. We have to have a dependable electrical generation system for this country so we can defend ourselves.
So are you saying these are dependable or non-dependent?
They're not dependable. We need to move towards the small modular reactor, nuclear reactors, and more natural gas and France, like France right now, there's... Okay, so that's really what I want to talk about, kind of a national security issue on that that may be a little off subject, but I support you. Thank you.
My name is Lori Sletton. Ron, me and I are fifth generation farmers in Yankton County. Industrial wind should not be sited near our farms. Thirty years ago, we supported industrial wind until a liberal Democrat friend of ours who managed an R A A in South Dakota told us how industrial wind makes the power grid very fragile and raises energy costs. After thorough investigation, we find only one aspect of industrial wind that's good. Turbines make vibrations when they chase the gophers out of our alfalfa fields. We have attended most of the Yankton County Wind Task Force and zoning meetings. They were very professional and did a thorough job. The task force voted to support a ban on industrial wind complexes here. The proposed updated ordinance includes a two-mile setback to protect non-participating residents. At the hearings, Ryan Heine shared that seismographs monitoring earthquakes must be sited ten miles from a turbine to be accurate. Several people gave firsthand accounts of experiencing vibrations in homes from three to five miles from the turbines. We presented an extensive four-year veterinary research project for Portugal documenting the acquired flexoral deformation of the distal intervalenial joints and poles known in the U S as turbine foot. Turbine foot and causes other joint issues too in livestock are caused by low frequency sound or what we call vibrations of the turbines being placed near our farms. Ground vibrations cause the tendons in the back of the front legs to tighten and shrink and roll the feet under and become, livestock becomes completely disabled. A local psychoanalysis testified that our clients who live near the turbines have anxiety and mental illness caused by noise, vibrations, flicker, and blinking red lights at night. Federal law requires a two-mile setback for eagles. More and more counties are adding setbacks for protection of people. Dozens of people have shown up at the county meetings this year to let you know, "We do not want industrial wind in our county" and only about three people from this county have testified that they want turbines here and only one of them actually lives on that land. First, I have over a hundred and fifty signatures of petitions. We did not go stand on street corners or out at Walmart. These are just our neighbors and they wanted to let you know that first, we would support the ban on industrial wind here, it doesn't fit here. And secondly, we actually want you to increase that five to a five-month setback. We'd be happy with a two-mile setback, but based upon all the information that was put at the task force, five might be more appropriate. People signed all of these. The people who live here should not be made into guinea pigs so deep pocket out-of-state companies can make money. Over the last thirty years, turbines have gotten a lot taller, but the companies have not taken care of the harm that comes from them. People who live here want to take, want, the people that don't live here... People who live here want to take, want, the people that don't live here want us to take all the risk, or reharvest the benefits. The people who actually live here do not want the new green scam here. So thank you for protecting us. And I am, can give these to Gary. There's over a hundred and fifty signatures.
I live in the Turkey Valley Township. A little over five years ago, there was a children's book written from Dr. Seuss. You may have or have not heard of it, but it's called The Lorax. It's a story about the wunsler who tells of how he needs trampoliner trees for his needs, which is some kind of ornament. The Lorax who spoke of the trees protested, but no one listened. The wunsler cracks up production, building a factory and expanding to meet his customers' needs. The Lorax pleaded with the wunsler to keep the trees alive, but the wunsler was driven by money and pays no attention. Soon the animals, fish and birds that all lived there were driven off because they can't survive in a habitat with few trees. With the last trampoliner tree chopped down, need production stopped, workers leave, factory closes up, and the wunsler is left in a desolate world of his own creation. The book teaches that there is a long-lasting consequences of the actions that we make today, because the actions that we make today affect the future generation. Like the wunsler, very few will profit, but we and our children will also share the consequences. We are all responsible for the fate of this county, you especially as commissioners. We, the people, have voted you in to be our voice for the county, to do what is right for those who live in the Mayfield and Turkey Valley Townships. We, the people, are sounding the warning sirens. Are we going to continue to be ignored? Don't you believe our homes, lives, and our beautiful landscape that God created is worth fighting for? I will continue to fight for my generation, my children, and generations to come. We would be wise to take note of a lesson taught in a children's book about the decisions we make now to profit a few will likely become a curse in the near future. I believe this book is one of Dr. Seuss's most impressive and meaningful books. It teaches so many universal lessons about regret, greed, consequences, redemption, and hope in humanity. I want to end with an important quote from this book. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Burson, Yankton. Just some comments and all brief and concise. I encourage the board to keep to the two-mile, forty-five decibel, fifty percent down on decommissioning. These policies represent the extensive work of the citizens, planning and zoning members to present a policy to you that reflects the will of the majority of the people of Yankton County. I know we've talked about this population thing over and over. We know the vast majority of those that support big wind do so because they directly benefit. Okay? We also know that the number is small, since we know thirty-seven turbines are proposed for Yankton County. Let's say there's seventy-five checks a month going out. In fact, let's quadruple that and double it again. The five-hundred-and-sixty people are for wind. That represents two percent of the base, two percent of the population of Yankton County. Okay? That's not, I don't, I think that's pretty clear. The vast majority would prefer to say, "No, thank you," to wind. Every county board member from other counties that the Wind Task Force talked to expressed regret, and I just heard the word, regret, at compromises that made their zoning less than two miles. And they regret it to this day. You've heard of Von Hall? Knox now is trying to increase from one mile. And we know once the cows out of the barn, you know, good luck getting the back end. So I really, there's a reason for this and people have expressed regret for not achieving it. Now, on my way in here, I was handed an email from a reputable source that we may have a conflict of interest issue here with the county government. Earlier, a couple, two, three meetings back, it was mentioned that from someone from another county talking about the wind boys here, playing, "Well, fast and loose with the cash," AKA bribes. Okay? That was allegedly brought up here. We all heard that and I think that's recorded. But I'll just read from this, this email that was generated from someone within county government. Well, guess who made a large donation to their department? The company that wants to put up the wind farm. And it was accepted. So I think we need to, this needs to be investigated and if this is true, I think we're going to have a whole problem. As well as conflicts of interest, we need to be sure that this thing is transparent and we've got nothing going on behind the scenes in the smoky boardrooms. Okay? This needs to be on the table, front of the cameras.
Time.
For all to see. What's that?
I said fine.
Time. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Just to clarify, the next year offered to give our ambulance service a $10,000 grant or fund that was donated that was turned down.
Okay. Was it accepted and then told?
It was not accepted.
Okay. I'll go ahead and hear that.
I got one more coming up here and then we'll get, get.
I'm Lee Sletton from the North Yankton, God knows where I live. The biggest thing that nobody is really keyed in on is that this county is zone of agriculture, not commercial industrial wind. There's nothing agriculture above those unless they've got something that's agricultural or oilless in them. If not oil, it's probably used in agriculture, but they don't produce anything to eat. Also need to look at all, if they got all these litigation against them, is that somewhere that you want to be doing this? I mean, you gotta think about that. That's fancy words, actually.
Members of the commission, my name is Miles Schumacher. I'm an attorney at Lynn Jackson Law Firm in Sioux Falls. I've been practicing in South Dakota since nineteen seventy-nine. About the last seventeen years, I've spent a considerable part of my practice representing developers of wind projects in addition to on occasion representing individual landowners in analyzing contracts with wind developers. I'm going to start and focus on the half of the proposed ordinance. Section twenty-nine seventeen serves as presenting a prohibitive disincentive for developers who would be interested in developing by Jahaan County. The restriction on transfer of the permit serves as a disincentive for a couple of reasons. One is that the process of developing and organizing a wind project often involves multiple entities, often under common ownership. It is not uncommon for there to be a developing entity that turns over the project to an operating entity and those internal transfers involve a transfer of ownership of the project sometimes and in turn a transfer of ownership of the permit. Prohibiting that kind of a transfer serves no purpose other than to make it more difficult and perhaps impossible to develop the project. Secondly, the long-term financing of these projects, which are hugely expensive to put together, often involve equity partners who acquire some ownership in the project. And in order to do that, a new entity would be formed with the original developer or subsidiary of theirs plus the equity partner. And again, that would involve transfer of ownership of the project and in turn, a transfer of the permit. Finally, and I individually have been involved in this project, there's at least one project in South Dakota where the off-taker, the purchaser of the power, ended up purchasing the project because part of their corporate philosophy was to own wind projects in addition to purchasing power from them. And that's the Crown Bridge due project in northern South Dakota. Excel entered into a power purchase agreement and ended up because as part of their corporate philosophy, purchasing the project and in that case, again, the permit is transferred to them. So because the staff, the ordinance proposal is written would prohibit those types of transactions that really serve no purpose. I proposed an amendment which I provided to Gary at the planning and zoning meeting and whether should that be adopted.
I have a question. Since you've been involved for seventeen years with wind farms, how many of the wind farms would you know of in the area that even the company putting them up have failed to perform?
I have yet to see one where the company has failed to perform.
They rise made the payments to the county and the school?
As far as I know, I'm not personally familiar with any that have not failed to perform.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for you. And I think part of the reason for this being recommended to us is we have you guys in front of us and you're telling us you're going to do this. Hey, I don't know how I could get it closer, Wanda, but you're telling us you're going to do this and this and then it's sold to another company and then it's sold to another company and then pretty soon we don't know anybody who's involved. And if there is a problem, you know, you guys aren't around anymore. We certainly don't want to end up in that position. So I think that's something.
Right. And that's why the amendment provides for a transfer to an affiliated or subsidiary company that probably is in the same ownership as the original company or to an off-taker which is going to be a utility like Excel, which is certainly going to provide because they're here taking the power from the project and I'm talking about somebody that's going to walk away from the project. There are other means of protecting if that is a concern by making sure that the transfer involves continuing responsibility by the original developer for any of the performance. So it's just too big a risk for a developer to rely on a consent after they invested hundreds of millions of dollars that could be stripped of that performance by whom they are.
Yeah, it says in there that the Board of Adjustment may grant exceptions to the rules in cases of, you know, so there is.
It's the uncertainty of that. It's a different craft. Chris.
Go ahead. Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Oh, I'll ask you, sir.
Point of information is if we have three minutes on one topic, can we speak on another topic?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Chris Olson. I hold a PhD in environmental sciences. For the past fifteen years, I've been consulting both to government agencies as well as the wind industry on proper setting of turbines. Conducted a number of research projects on proper setting of wind turbines published in peer-reviewed literature. I've worked in over twenty-five states on wind projects, over a hundred active wind projects themselves, and I'm happy to be back here speaking in Yankton County again. I was that voice on the phone with Professor Allen Anderson, who we'll speak after, was there, so I talked to you guys back in July. I watched all twenty-one hours of the task force meeting, wind meetings. I've attended all of the planning commission meetings to date on this topic and I've certainly made my opinions known to the planning commission. I certainly applaud the hard work that they did. I think there are many good parts of the ordinance provision that you should do, things like the shadow flicker provision, for example. Unfortunately, there are a number of serious other issues, however, with sound setbacks. I've outlined those for you in a letter that I sent you. Happy to speak to those tonight. So it's a very hard job you folks face. How do you determine what proper citing criteria is for wind turbines when maybe just a couple of years ago, nobody, you didn't even know how to spell wind turbine, right? It is not an easy job. So where do you look for it? I recommend you look to the state PUC has heard hundreds of hours of testimony on both sides of the issue for the last five or six years on the last five wind projects. Okay? They have citing criteria that you should look to. They're the ones that have, I appeared before them on a number of projects. So they're also aligned with the same requirements in other states, New York, North Dakota, Minnesota, Wisconsin, others that have state sightings. So very quickly, the ones that we, when we say would sterilize or make it almost impossible to project, we're not taking that lightly. So the first one I'd say was sound, is to go to the state, recommended forty-five decibels wind turbine noise and non-participating homes. If I was to be quiet, if everybody was to be quiet in the room for a second, the room's about fifty right now, just the background noise of the HVAC system and like. You're going to see on the letter that we presented a number of changes or recommendations to the setbacks. So we do recommend, you know, for example, certainly the two miles, you know, you could not build a project. No project has been built in any community that has a two-mile setback. It's essentially exclusionary. So the ones that are in the table on setbacks, again, are aligned with state requirements by the PUC. I recommend either three times the total height of a turbine or fifteen hundred feet, one mile to municipalities, miles from a lake district, et cetera. Happy to discuss those as we go. And then the final one that, you know, that I can speak to is on wildlife, livestock, you know, I think part of the ordinance change there is appropriate. Let the state, the state's role is to take care of those type of issues. So ultimately, I would urge you to adopt standards that have over a decade of proven track record here in South Dakota. It will be protected by public health, safety, welfare, and we're all allowed responsible development. Thank you. And without a can answer any questions, you may add now or later on. Thank you, Chris.
My name is Andrea Baker. And first of all, I do want to thank you guys for your willingness and your dedication to accepting the role of representing and really supporting your constituents who are looking at you here tonight. So we trust that you do see the balance and the fairness that has been set forth and brought to you in Article twenty-six. I understand that you are hearing from Chris and other people who are paid by the wind company, all kinds of promises. Heck, they're going to promise you the wind, maybe even the sky. Unfortunately, what is actually delivered on that is far from that promise. And how do we know that? Let's look at the other counties in the state of South Dakota, North Dakota, Nebraska, Iowa, Minnesota. We all have the ability to call those states up and to truly ask, "What were you promised and what have you received?" They are very different. And it is time truly for all of us to take notice of who are we selling ourselves out to? One of the things that I can tell you is that NEXERA is not an American company. Do the research and you will find who the shareholders are. They're not here. That's a problem. I do implore you to hear the voices of those who you represent, and that is the residents of Yankton County, not the wind companies. Your residents are asking you for protection from the industrial, and may I stress industrial, wind corporations and from foreign-owned businesses on your backyard and maybe even on your land. Please protect the people that you represent with courage and with pride. I have over twenty-five years of experience in the mental health field. I am a prior practice owner. I work with hospitals. And the thing that I can tell you is since the wind turbines have come into the state of South Dakota, my business has never been better. Why? Because... Because the noise. Now, here's the thing, Chris is talking about a certain level of noise, decibels that we hear with our ears. That's fine, he's right. The decibels that you hear with your ears are around fifty in this room. What is not spoken to and what cannot be spoken to, because the research that does prove this point is not going to support their goal. And that is the low-frequency vibrational noises that these machines make that cannot be heard with your ears. It is heard with your body and your brain. That is what literally drives people to feel crazy. It increases anxiety, depression, PTSD symptoms, suicide. How do I know? Because I am dealing with them. Every place where there are wind turbines, that is when they set in. And our doctors do support that. So I plead with you to hear your constituents, accept your elected role with courage, with pride, hear the people that are in front of you that you represent. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Clark, and first I wanted to say that.
Talk loud.
Talk loud, okay. I did attend the Wind Task Force meetings, and I want to start by saying they did a great job going through that ordinance very carefully, considering every aspect of that ordinance, and I want to applaud the job they did. I also want to say by the end, they did their job in updating that proposed ordinance, but they did take a vote. Their preference was to ban commercial wind, and that was based on all the evidence that they had gathered themselves and heard from the community. And that is what the community wants. Ninety-nine percent of the testimony has been against these, and not just, oh, I just want them a little farther away from me. People do not want these here. I would specifically like to address the fact that these are industrial developments. They don't belong in agricultural land. I realize you don't have an industrial development zone at this point, but that's what you should do. If you want wind here, you develop, you create an industrial zone. They purchase the land, and then they make their development. That would make far more sense. The people of this county do not want commercial, industrial wind. These things are huge. They talk about property rights. I'm sorry, those things are ginormous, and they have effects far, far from their property. They're affecting other people's rights more. So in conclusion, I just want to say, this board right now has responsibility to take direct action to support the people of this county in defensive ways, right? It's good what the people, what the will of the people is here. If you do not take that responsibility very, very seriously, do your best. I do trust you. I know you're trying to do your best. But these megaliths are going to stand for generations as monuments to corruption, to greed, and willful ignorance of the dangers of these and of the will of the people. So thank you for your time. I know I'm just being a little more direct and forceful because the time has come where you're gonna make a decision that affects everybody, including Yankton County and the surrounding counties, because they will look at what you do, and that will settle positions. Thank you. Also, I just want to say, as we worked on this, we developed a list of concerns that are far too numerous to go into. We did go through those with the task force, and I just want to hand these out to pass them down.
Can you make sure he gets a copy?
Yeah, there's not here.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas Conway. I live in northern Yankton County. I'd like to say I too support the proposed changes, Article Twenty-Six, and all the hard work that both the task force and the planning and zoning put into it. I'm concerned with what I've seen online and heard from people about these wind companies and how they impact where we live. One day, I'd like to farm my own land here in Yankton County. I currently do some hay with my dad, and I'm concerned if these wind turbines do come close to our fields, they might affect our crops. I've heard of many issues, wind turbines throwing fire blasts into fields, companies not picking it up. Also, I have heard about how changes in surface temperatures causing crops to not grow as well, and I am concerned with how the wildlife movement would change as I enjoy watching the wildlife and hunting. I've done lots of research online to talk to people who actually live by these turbines and listen to wind energy presentations. I'm just up here stating the facts I've gathered, not bitching about how they will ruin our view. Thank you.
No, but I can share, I agree. I can share my.
I like that.
You guys wanna go?
Well, we'd like you guys to be able to see at first, so that you guys can be a little bit closer up.
My name is Jackie Mayo. I live at Pearson's Corner, right dead smack in the middle of this proposal. What we would like people to see, especially you as the Commissioners, the green represents the voice of the people that are saying, "Not in my backyard." The pink dots are those that are going to benefit from these turbines. Right now, we have twenty-one easements. Only eight are going to live among those turbines. We, the people, and we are asking you to hear our voice. We are saying, "No." We know that the Wind Task Force has done their due diligence. They have done their research. They have gone to different sites. They have listened to different studies. They have listened to the people coming and voicing their concerns. We are not here to bitch like we've heard people say we are doing. We are here to voice our opinion. This is our home. We are asking not to have this in our backyard.
Ma'am, what was your last name?
Mayo.
Mayo?
Evening. My name is Matt Conway. I live up in northern Yankton County, too. I'd like to really appreciate all the work, hard work that the zoning board did and everybody else at task force. We support the changes to Article Twenty-Six. The Wind Task Force spent months doing their research, listening to the people who live, work, and visit our county. All the research they did supports the changes they have proposed. As time goes on, technology improves. We also need to be willing to change how we do things to fit the current times we live in. This is not the power to future, it is a poor substitute at best. It went obsolete in the nineteenth century during the industrial age for a reason. Small-scale wind for personal use does make sense, but commercial wind just doesn't pan out when you do the actual research into it. We learned how to use reliable, we learned how to use reliable energy, and that made more sense in the overall picture. California's tried this already, and their energy costs have doubled already. They're still dealing with rolling blackouts and brownouts. Europe's electricity is three or four times the cost of ours, if they can even get it. We don't want to follow suit. These commercial wind projects are another government make-work program. We here in Yankton County should not be into that. We haven't met with any stories about the companies coming to do a project and not following through with their promises to the people who live there long after the company has moved on. We have seen how much land the Mark Court Family Trust owns in northern Yankton County. We believe that that may sway or have influence on how John discusses and votes on these proposed changes, since he works as the manager for the Mark Court family business. We think it may be best for everyone if he stays out of discussion and votes. As a mission statement of this commission says, "You all will have honesty, integrity, and transparency in these proceedings." Thank you for your time and the work you're putting into making the decisions. That's best for all, believing Yankton County.
Thank you.
Josh, Justus, J-U-S-T-U-S. Sorry.
Talk loud, I'm old.
My name is Joshua Justus. I live just a couple miles, a couple miles away from Center Point, so there's about between four fifty and four fifty-first. So it's two and a half miles away. No.
You're also mad at us?
Yeah. And these wind farms are not very sustainable because they don't produce enough energy to compensate for the amount that they cost to put up and the land that they take over. And the efforts to reclaim that land is significantly more than they'll ever put out. And the waste left over after these windmills are drawn or that they've lived out their lives, produce all the energy they are going to, does not worth the amount of effort put into putting them up. And there's, there's simply more, there are better ways to produce energy than try and put these up that are just high source, that don't improve the quality of life anywhere near that. Thank you, thanks.
Thank you. Listen.
What's your name?
John Olson from IRE. I live.
Point on the map.
Yep. Right here, section twenty-three. Right here. My family started in nineteen oh one. I'm very proud to be there, and I enjoy this life that we have. I'm very thankful that the task force put all the work into it, the planning and zoning, all the work they did. I think this is very important. I think there are better places for wind energy. This is ag ground. Not when we have wind, but we're producing crops. Need the people. I think that's very, thank you for your time.
My husband and I are landowners in Yankton County, and I can point that out if you'd like me to.
You might as well use this.
And we are participating, landowners, and I support this new ordinance because it puts into place safeguards for the decommissioning, and it will protect those people that are participating. The safeguards that the plant, the task force put into place are significant, and I believe that is the one, really a very good reason to help support this ordinance, in addition to what else has been said.
Commissioners, you know, from listening to all the comments tonight and from several of the previous meetings, there's no decision that you're going to make tonight that is going to be viewed as the right decision by everyone. I've been in similar situation and many of the people, as many of the people here tonight, and I understand the frustrations and have empathy for them. As elected officials, I'm sure you already recognize that no matter the topic, someone is usually unhappy with your decision, and that makes it difficult to sift through the comments and to deal then with the factual data, especially on a topic like this that brings out so much emotion. As a representative of Yankton Thrive, our concern is the economic impact of county policy on potential future development. So whether the topic is zoning, broadband, roads, housing, our concern is the economic impact of those decisions. As a county, we don't want to zone ourselves out of potential revenue generating opportunities. It is important from a financial perspective to position ourselves to be proactive in our policies rather than reactive. Businesses looking to invest in South Dakota want to have a sense of stability when they make large-scale investments. At a previous meeting, it was stated that Yankton County needs to make decisions for the residents of Yankton County and not compare ourselves to other counties. We could do that, but that would put us at a significant disadvantage when we look to grow investment opportunities in the county. We need to take a look at all zoning policies and see how we compare to those around us and to also the states around us, and work to position ourselves for potential growth in investment. Along with economic investment, Thrive works on workforce development. Everyone is aware that well-paying jobs matter, not just within the city of Yankton, but in our rural areas as well. So many of our youth are leaving because they cannot find career opportunities. Serious consideration should be given to opportunities that can keep our youth working in rural areas. Yankton County is not in a bubble. The PUC and other government agencies have guidelines that help guide us to keep us on an even playing field with the other counties in South Dakota. As an elected official, you have twenty-two thousand people that you are representing when enacting policy. Please consider the financial future of the county and how our policies will impact businesses looking to invest here. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of the proposed zoning changes.
Again, David Ellis, thank you for giving me another moment to speak. I drive Highway Thirty-Seven frequently, and I think we all know what is wrong with West Side Thirty-Seven, because it's a tremendous ice order. The horizon is gone. A lot of us have worked and scraped to get a little piece of land. I don't farm. I came from a farm background in South Dakota. Now I live on a small acreage, away from town, away from noise pollution, the bike pollution, all of those things, because we enjoy the serenity and peace of this rural life. And I drive along Highway Thirty-Seven, and those two things are part of my estimation. The other thing is, these folks want to come in and build this, and not one of them are going to live near these things. They're in and out. I look at those things along Highway Thirty-Seven and see, I saw them, they have a few dollars on them, driving this whole thing. His profit is going someplace out in South Dakota. I think the aesthetics matter as well as money. I think the quality of living matters. Having a peaceful, quiet area that we've chosen for our retirement years, our final years on this road, and then somebody who wants to come in and disrupt it. Like, it troubles me that that sort of gets lost and then we're looked at as complaining. Something that I, that I saw a few years ago with tax issue here in Yankton, and where the community has helped, there are. that where the community has known there are things that matter besides money. So I think quality of living and the aesthetics. The other thing is I understand that if I kill a bald eagle, I can pay up to ten thousand dollars and bind him five years in prison. If I'm not mistaken, they've built in an allowable number of eagles to be killed by these machines. It begs the question, who's counting? Who keeps track of how many get killed by a specific machine? When does the machine stop so that it doesn't kill anymore? And it's not just eagles. It's a lot of birds like it where it was. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, but you've got a tough job. I understand that. But I think first and foremost is your constituents and their desires and their outlook on living and, 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 thank you.
Now that the map is up here, may I point where I live?
Sorry?
Now that the map is up, may I point where I live? Just let you guys know.
That's up to Mr. Mark Gordon, but he's German.
Go ahead. Point it out.
This is where Alan, Gaskin, Villa, Clara, Ila, and Craylon all live.
My name is Laurie Slidon. Let me just address those numbers quick though, better on the map. The other gentleman got to speak twice?
On two different subjects.
This is, oh, I mean not two, two things on the wind. I just want to remind you, there's twenty-three thousand people in Yankton County and most of them do not want these and only twenty people get money from those.
Kate Swihardt, I wonder whether the Yankton County County property and play county law. I'm not going to advocate whether I'm for or against wind, but just some numbers that need to be put out there. Our population is expected to grow by seventy million people by twenty thirty-five. That is the number of those released by the Census Bureau. I have worked in the wind industry and I've worked in the oil and gas industry. The wind industry, I was a research scientist for the test site in California. I worked on the Bindex unit, which was a three megawatt unit. I worked on the DAP info units and I worked on the Carter twenty-five kilowatt machines. So these are all the type of machines that we did research for. I've been around wind parks for years. I've been around the electric industry for years. I've been around the oil and gas for years. One of the things that we need to be looking at, we need to have a mix of energy sources. We cannot depend on one thing. We cannot depend on fossil fuels. In Texas, all of the fossil fuel down there, if you go into the West Texas areas, into the Permian or Anadarko or any of the basins down there, you're going to see what it's like. That is destroying the land down there in so many ways. The fracking is destroying things. That is hurting our water. We've got to find other sources. Wind and solar are two very viable options. There is a new nuclear facility that is going in Wyoming that Bill Gates is building. It's a new type of technology. If we don't want this in our backyard, I can't say that I do. Do we want a nuclear facility in our backyard? We close down San Onofre in California? Are we going to have to have something to replace all the fossil fuel because we will have to look at it? The need is growing. We need to have a source of energy. Otherwise, we're going to be looking at rolling brownouts and rolling blackouts because it will come. The hydro facility out here is not going to continue on growing. It is going to continue on going down because of the siltation of the lake and you cannot create energy and you don't have the water flow. If we have drought situations, that is another issue also that plays into this. I've worked at San Onofre, which is a nuclear facility that's now been mothballed. I've worked at Solar One in California. I worked with the Energy Control System in California. We had to know how we were going to balance all of our different sources of energy and it was critical that we do it to keep the lights on. The gentleman that talked about how incredibly expensive California utilities are, that is one of, kind of a fallacy. I worked on reasonable hearings. We had to pay what the current rate was for customers, we had to pay that to those producers. So that cost was always escalated, but we were watching out not only for our company, but we're also watching out for the producers to make sure that they got a fair shake on the fossil time. Thank you.
Where are you from?
I'm from Wakanda, Richmond.
Lake County?
Lake County.
Yeah, so I'm Alan Claus Anderson. I'm the chair of the Energy Practice Group of Full Style Law Firm. Uh, I'm also a professor at the University of Kansas School of Law where I teach in O'Neal and Shulaw. And in the materials that were provided previously, some of the materials that were advised submitted as well as Dr. Olson's others as part of the, uh, coordinate review process. In there, you'll see a number of things, including on the energy issues, which a lot of people want to talk about it, love to do that, but in that case here, I'll focus on the property rights issues. And why do you care about property rights? Well, when you make a decision, you've seen this tonight, you're going to either allow someone to use their property for a healthy, safe, economic purpose, or you'll take it away. And when you take it away and it is, and if it is a safe and healthy, you know, use, you harm that person. And when we talk about this, we have to remember the applicant, the people that are harmed, the people that enter into private contracts, that choose to enter in, they determine this is the best use of their property. So that should get harmed by this, but you can't forget the people that want to participate in this. And when we do that, we alter the free market. I mean, our entire economic system is a capitalist system with free market that we regulate to make sure we do it health, free and safe. And so whether or not you're for or against wind energy, whether or not you have a strong set of property rights is how we protect the free market system. You don't have to be in favor of or against, but it is protecting the property rights. And we know this because of the Fourteenth Amendment, founding of our country, and Fifth Amendment has this that allows the federal uses. It states, no, no state shall deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Also, at the founding of South Dakota and Section Two of Article Six, it states, no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. So this is literally foundational to our country and in fact, Madison in writing Federalist Paper Number Ten was exactly worried about this situation where people worried about factions coming and taking the property rights from people, which is what we're talking about today, that we're seeing. So when you do, you have these restrictions and you have excessive setbacks and those things, which were intended to be a ban. That is taking people's property rights. And I'll address the issue. People will say, well, what about my property rights? The important thing there is that we do make sure that it's healthy and it's safe. And when we do establish that in all of the materials, we have decades of history on this, both on scientific literature as well as actual practice. Project here in South Dakota is more than twenty years old. We don't have to guess on this. So when we have that use, you create these excessive setbacks. And whether you're for or against the use, you're taking someone's property right. And in that case, you're doing it in a really unfair way. Like that two mile setback is egregiously wrong for what's needed. So again, with businesses, you heard this when you think about these common development opportunities, business and industry looks, they want to make sure this is a stable place that protects property rights, regulates it appropriately, could protect that. So I think you have to be careful with that. Anyhow, yeah, uh, you know, to the extent, I'm happy to answer any questions, obviously as an authority as well.
I, I got, I got a question. A gentleman spoke earlier about all these lawsuits that are against Nextera. And since you're the attorney, uh, can you shed a little bit of light on this?
Well, so obviously Nextera is a very large company. It has operations in, I think, in forty-eight different states. There are occasional lawsuits. I mean, everyone has the chance to file a lawsuit. I would imagine anyone who's had a business for some period of time has probably been involved in some form of lawsuit. So there's nothing wrong with that. That's why we have court systems. That way we have, you know, the ability, we have lawyers in this room, of course, on court. So people, you know, they end up having a disagreement, selling as part of a, you know, orderly process in the courts is certainly nothing that should be held against someone. In addition, with companies large as that, uh, to have some lawsuits in a given time is certainly not inappropriate in any way, should be prescribed that way.
Thank you. What was your name?
It's Alan Claus Anderson.
Accept the motion to take a five minute break?
I move to take a five minute break.
Your doctor, ten bucks an hour.
I messaged him, I was like, this is how hard he said. All the people are right, so I don't care what's needed. There's some people that are really intelligent, they're-
We're in the, uh, we're getting on five weeks break during COVID times. We're gonna, we're gonna go back. But I don't, I don't, I don't know what, what the ruling, but, you know. Yeah, it is. So they don't make any- Yeah, yeah, I will.
Me too.
Right.
I don't want to see them, right?
Right.
Okay, everyone take your seats, please.
We're back.
No one told me this was the final night on this.
It's not the final.
What?
No. The second meeting's on the twenty-sixth.
I better write that down, not to show.
Twenty-sixth. Mark's making friends.
Did he give you a thousand bucks to go get for it, or what?
No.
You guys in the bathroom passing out hundreds?
Yeah, yeah. I only got like two bucks. Mark.
I'd move that we go back in the regular session and then people be quiet.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Don, go back in the regular session. Thank you, thank you. Next kicker.
Just spoke to some people out in the hall and some of the talking, they could not come across the, the TV out there. That was their comment.
It's live.
Do what?
They said they asked if Wanda would please speak into the mic.
I don't.
You had a motion to second on the paper, right? Both same sides? Yes, sir.
Still work out my head. By twenty-four, where they, uh, talked about their setbacks and all their, uh, what they wanted to receive with wind. And one of the supervisors, I had the end of the twenty minutes deal, and I just wrote down some notes. Let me go through them here. Um, so in, in Knox County, there is, there's wind farm. Sorry, in Knox County, there is a, um, wind company right there, there are windmills there. And he said that, uh, that wind, you know, company has gone bankrupt. And one of the things he talked about is after they went bankrupt, their decommissioning bond cannot be reinstated. Um, they only had a two hundred fifty thousand dollar decommissioning bond. And after they filed check for eleven bankruptcy, they could not, uh, they could not get another bond for the two hundred fifty thousand. So they ended up going to Spain, the country Spain, to get a decommissioning bond. Um, he, uh, he was asking, the supervisor was asking the windmill representatives, um, uh, what is the decommissioning cost of a windmill? And he asked three different reps from windmill company, and the first two couldn't give him a straight answer. And he said the third one finally told him one point five million. That's a lot more than their two hundred, two thousand dollar bond, obviously. Uh, he also went on to say that in Minnesota, in two thousand nineteen, the average cost to, uh, decommission a windmill was between four hundred and five hundred thousand, and now it's one point five million. He also went on to say that, uh, the Nebraska Land and Liberty Coalition, um, is promoting these windmills. And, but, there is no Nebraska Land and Liberty Coalition. If you look at the Nebraska Land and Liberty Coalition, Nebraska, North South Dakota is on it. Later, they apologized for lying. So, um, he went on to say that fifteen people want to get out of their lease that they signed. Two of them asked their attorneys, and they said they can't get out of it. He also went on to say, um, there are lobbyists sending letters to the commissioners, and they get paid to write these letters to influence the decision. Um, furthermore, he said that Cedar Knox Public Power, which is public power in Knox County, uh, had a newsletter, and in the newsletter, it specifically stated that wind energy does not address future reliability issues. So, uh, in Knox County, they, the board of supervisors approved the planning and zoning setbacks. And here in Yankton, you guys did a much better job because you had a task force that went through twenty-one hours of meetings, plus many more hours researching, and, and the planning and zoning board also agreed with them. So I would, uh, I would also suggest that you listen to the people that are here because they don't want to meet us. How much time do I have?
Time.
Question for Travis, wh- what did you say was the cost to take down a tower?
Working.
One point five million.
A single, that's a one single tower.
My name is Barbara Steska, I'm from Viber. First of all, I want to thank you for your patience and attention to this, this issue. And the ladies have spoke to the financial opportunities needed in the county, in the county, that's absolutely correct. You as a board do need to consider sustainable income. There have been many studies that show how these industrial turbines reduce crop and livestock production, thereby reducing the agricultural income. Ag profit margins are already very thin. Further reduction of these margins will have the effect of an even further exodus of our young hoping to continue or even start in agriculture. If you want to keep your residents that you already have, if you want to keep your young, do your best, and adopt Article twenty-six. Thank you.
Uh, Lauren Nelson, I was hearing from the ATN as part of the task force saying I'm on planning and zoning. First of all, just talking about wind. On the way back from Nebraska the other night, Saturday night, uh, you know, there's a lot of wind, um, windmills sitting standstill. Why? And they're not being used, why? They're unreliable, correct? When you need water for cattle, when it's hot, when it's been hot the last few days, they need water, there's been no wind. And that's why those have been obsolete. It's because they're not reliable. And the, the times when you need that water, or when you need that electricity the most, when we have hot days, just like these last couple of days, the wind's been nonexistent. So I just want to say that. Um, before our planning and zoning meeting that we had in July, I went up to northeast South Dakota. If anybody's been up there, there's lots of turbines up there. And the reason I went up there is because I wanted to see firsthand what people thought of these turbines. Um, I wanted to go to the source, and it wasn't scientific, nothing about it. All it was was me driving around and finding people along the road, or in their fields, or in their, um, driveways, asking them, first thing I'd ask them, I'd say, what do you think of these turbines? And I, you know, probably talked about it to a dozen people, talked about half of them intensely. And the first thing, there was this pause. Nobody was like, oh, we love them, we're getting all this money from them, we're so glad they're here. There was a pause. And then they would continue on telling me. It's not really the site, nobody really said, you know, hey, I don't like to look at them. It was the noise. One gentleman told me that if he's ready to sell his acreage there right outside of Elkton, he says, I'm gonna have to make sure I'm very careful when I bring somebody out here to try to sell this place on a day when it's, there's no noise coming from the tower. And that's the thing that, um, this ordinance and that we have worked on, and that's been a part of my life, some of us also, since January, is to protect people. Look at that map. Look at those green dots. Those people live there. There are only eight people that actually are gonna get money from next era or whatever that live there. The rest of those people are not getting money. You have to protect them, they are your constituents, they voted for you and put you into office. That's, there's been questions about, you know, trying to make a, the decisions here, you're not gonna make anybody happy. Those are the people who got you where you're at right now, and those are the people that you have to listen to. They also talk about economic development. Eight people who give money will be, who live in, who live in that area. Again, I'm on planning and zoning, I got the packet. Some of this money is not even gonna stay in South Dakota. There's people on that list who do not even live in our state. Where is that money gonna go to? It's our natural resource, it's our wind, our concrete, everything that's going to be used to produce energy that's not even gonna stay here. So I urge you, ordinance twenty-six, keep it the way it is before you.
My name is Alan Ward, I'm from Viber, South Dakota, I'm an organic farmer just south of Viber. Starting with something I'm repeating. Um, I like to look out my window and look around in all the directions that I can see, nothing but farmland, farm places, livestock, and grass, or corn, or oats, or beans. We are an ag country. We are not an industrial development. And because of what our specialty is, we need to continue to concentrate on that specialty. Sure, we have the beautiful sight around there that we can enjoy, and like one fellow mentioned, the ability to sit there just quietly, pay attention to the, the, uh, creation, creation around us, and how unique that is for this part of our United States. We want to preserve that. We don't need mechanical monstros- monstrosities messing up our views. Dependability. These guy, these, this thing is not dependable. Fifteen to thirty percent, uh, is the amount of the production. I think most businesses try to get somewhere between ninety-five and a hundred percent in order to stay alive and operate on their own, and not needing billions of dollars of federal funding to do it. Migratory, right on top of the migratory system for all of our wildlife that are flying. And if they don't get chopped up by the four hundred mile per hour or the three hundred mile per hour tips of those blades, they'll probably get into one of the horizontal tornadoes, which are called vortexes, and the lungs will end up exploding. Um, EMF hasn't been mentioned tonight, electromagnetic fields. This is maybe research that's already been known by some people, but it's just coming out now. An electromagnetic field affects the physical and the biological activity in our bodies. And the bodies end up generating things because of that that makes us sick, can even kill us. That's research. Under the, okay, one more thing. And that is, there was a fellow that was given the responsibility to establish the state model. The first thought that came to his mind was the term, by God, the people rule. And they thought, he thought that was a pretty good, and then he stopped thinking. No. How do you say that phrase? By God, the people rule, or by God, the people rule? There's two different attitudes there. So he decided to change one word. Under God, the people rule. Most of the people in this area believe in Jesus Christ. And we take the time and we make the risks to do what we do the best, which is farming, agriculture, that sort of thing. We do not need something.
I'm sorry, sir, but you're gonna have to be done.
Good day.
More people that want to speak up.
God bless you.
Thank you.
It was a good story. I was, I was listening.
We've told them to use the tapes or something.
They're here to keep Wanda in line.
Pretty much. It's not working.
Well, my name is Todd Christensen, I live just across the border from Yankton County, Turner County. But there's a few different things, uh, I was taught here, gonna talk about. They talk about this company is so, so, uh, whatever you wanna say, uh, a top-notch co- a company or whatever. But there's, I know a lot of people want to get out of their contract, but they won't let them get out. Well, most businesses, if you have a problem with something, they'll release you from your deal. And, uh, that's one thing. And then, uh, and the ones that are hoping to change the ordinances to the setbacks at the zoning and the planning and the task force, uh, come up with, should be, and then, uh, should be changed that hopefully. And then, uh, when you think about the people tonight that are talking here, they come up beside the ones from the, the wind company. There's no lawyers, no, no fancy suits, no fancy red sport cars that pulled up when I pulled up. If I were a hundred thousand, my five thousand or two thousand dollar twenty thirteen pickup with two hundred thousand miles on. So hopefully you could seriously consider listening to the, the people that have elected you. I know I didn't elect you, I'm in the county, but I'm right beside, I know a lot of people that don't want to, or have, or don't want to interfere in their property. If the people want them, that's fine, but just set, spare setbacks for everyone in the, in the area for the non-participating people. And, uh, hopefully you give serious consideration to what the task force and the planning and zoning come with. And I guess that's pretty much all I wanted to say, and thank you.
Oh, county commission, I am Dan Tack, and thanks for the opportunity. I just wanna say that more counties in twenty twenty-three rejected wind turbines. So why is Yankton more, that bad? Um, and the reason was the quality of life. That's what we gotta really look at, I think, quality of life. There were two counties in Nebraska, I think a Stanton, no, there was two quarters in, I think Stanton County in Nebraska, very similar ground, one had a wind turbine on it and one didn't. The one with the wind turbine on it auctioned off for twelve thousand one hundred dollars. And the one that didn't have a wind turbine on it, auctioned off for sixteen thousand dollars. So right there, I don't really know the total situation about behind it, but I could see that happening, something to think about. Uh, there, do you guys, I have a question too. Do you guys know if they could put a lien on your land when they put a turbine on it? That, that, that the wind turbine companies can put liens on their land? That's something we gotta look into because there was a, there was a family.
Alan, would you like to answer that question? Whatever you'd like, whatever you do. Go ahead, answer the question.
So, no, the wind companies took with leads, first of all, it's only people who participated in the project, and then they have a construction project on it, so just like any. Yeah.
Come on, please go up.
So, so no, the wood companies do not. So what they, what you have is a, just like any other construction project, whether it's on your house or anything else, occasionally the contractors will have a dispute, and a subcontractor would file a temporary lien on that. Again, the only people this could obtain to are those who chose to participate in the project, not any non-participant, no one else. Then the contractors get it worked out, no different than any other construction project. So it is possible, it has happened on occasion, and again, they're short-term, but, but they're not.
In Canada, a family, a trust, a family trust ended up with a two point eight million lien.
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on, Dan, hold on. You asked a question, Alan answered it, and we're not gonna argue about it. Now you can finish your.
No, he asked, he asked whether it, it can happen, and there can be that much. And, and I'm just saying, it, it happened to a family up in, in Canada where they had a, a big lien on their land, so much so that they couldn't even sell that ground, even though they wanted to. That's what I'm saying. Because it was, because the lien was too high, you know, but, uh. Oh, boy. Wish I'd have right told something, I, I forgot, I had another point I wanted to bring up, it was pretty good, but. But, but the long and short of it is, um, with, with, you know, with the real estate values and, you know, I, I just don't think that the setbacks, that even the task, I, I think five miles is minimum, even. I think, I think, yeah. I mean, I don't even want to five miles. I mean, some parts of Canada got twenty-two miles, you know, setback, but they got more sparse areas and they got beautiful mountains, they don't want to really see it or be on something. But we've got beautiful landscape here too and, there's quite a few people that live by these that really, you know, at first they didn't think too much, but they really don't like them. And I don't know, should we put one in the middle of Yankton? You know, it's not like.
Next.
Saint William's, I live in Newton County. The last bit of conversation here raised a question in my mind, and I don't see it addressed in Article twenty-six. That land that these wind towers sit on, as well as the land going, the roads going to them, are you going to change the property valuation on that? Because it's obviously not agriculture anymore, it's industrial. How is that going to be taxed? And is the county prepared to tax that at a different rate? Because in my mind, if it's industrial and commercial, it should be taxed at that rate as opposed to agricultural. So how are you going to do that? When I look at that map and I see all these little squares, is the county prepared to do that? And I know you can't answer today, but it's something you need to discuss.
I believe that's done as a centrally assessed.
You can't interrupt her. She might not be done yet.
I believe that's done as a centrally assessed.
Yeah, they would all stay in ag and still be the same ag department.
The land, the land is as before, but the actual project is centrally assessed. Similar to pipelines and gets on pipelines and everything else. That's how it's, that's how it's assessed.
Were you done, Sandy? Were you done, Sandy?
Yeah, I was done, that's why I sat down.
My name is Steve Brockmiller, and I do have a residence in the boundary of the wind tower. House, farm in five sections within this area. My experience with these go back, I think, twenty years to flipping when we were here, wanting to easements, I didn't sign at that time. I believe it was nineteen when Orion had this project. And I put together twenty-three questions, submitted to Orion, asked him for answers. And after several months, there's kind of weak response back to these questions, which I did also pass out to several farmers, my knowledge, and would be subject to them coaching for wind towers. And hopefully they appreciated, they liked them. Then, well, this goes back probably last year, I guess, flop of left-wing farmers or line comments for a landmark acceptance. I think we got another five page of information on that. Just to kind of summarize a little bit, some of our families, they came here, they homesteaded almost a hundred fifty years ago now some of these farms we have, on both sides, my wife's family on my side. I feel a lot of responsibility to continue to not want this kind of thing. They would probably not appreciate it, I don't either. I did go back one time, I took USGS geologic maps and I counted wetland at the boundaries of this wind farm. There are twenty-six sections that have wetland, you know, and those, and that twenty-six section told sixteen thousand acres of wetland. One of these sections also has a US Fish and Wildlife waterfall production within it. So I can't imagine what a series of wind towers is gonna do to the waterfall production within those areas. One thing that struck me was that lawyer out here that made a comment about property rights within the constitution, both federal and state. Well, I don't know if you ever tried developing property within the boundaries of a large municipality. You'll soon find out what your property rights are, regulation is stifling. Just try it sometime, I've done it, I'm in here too, I've done it, I also farm, and I've done it, it's pretty damn tough. You'll soon realize you don't have a lot of rights when you try to develop your own property within a municipality. So I think this is what they're gonna use with the ordinance, twenty-two miles. Hey, that's their right, that's the regulation, if you can't take it, then I guess go somewhere else.
Any other public comments?
You gotta come to the front.
Thank you. I'd like to take that opportunity and take a few minutes to make a few comments. My name is Mike Eery, I live in Yankton and also involved with.
You turn the button up at the bottom. There you go.
Okay, very good, thank you. As a member of the original income task force with the ordinance and planning county commissions, with whom we'd be responsible for approving revised ordinance, I would like to think that we would all come together in these committees, commissions, and the companies that are involved with it with integrity, trust, ethical business practices, respect for others, including their health and welfare and their property and their environment, stewardship that is fair and equitable to all. Also, that no one, correctly or indirectly, including family and/or associates, have, do, or will receive compensation, tax, or financial benefits or other value. In my opinion, we use sound, practical judgment in the revised ordinance. And in closing, for this part, I'd just like to note that we reviewed and updated the ordinance that should be fair and equitable to all. And I think that's been noted at different times this evening, concern about our geographic areas, and that may be impacted through wind energy ordinance. I thank you for listening on this comment here. I would have a comment also, is that I may not be against wind energy. It's just where is it in this country and even in the state of South Dakota or wherever it is? There are a lot of open areas, and I think that Exterina has done a nice job of telling us that really they're in open areas and not in areas that are populated by people. This was a notice that was sensuous, that it was gonna be a meeting, and I don't see much property in the background as far as farmland and other areas. And I repeat what I said here a few weeks ago, is on the web pages for the company, there are a number of images, and if you count them, you count forty-nine, and there was not one building or one farm, it was all distance out into three and four and ten miles, whatever it happened to be. So I think we are in association here with the company that probably do in service for us overall. But I don't know if we've picked the right location to have that done. We are in a density area that was one of the first things, the first meeting.
Time.
Thank you, that we talked about. So I thank you for your comments for listening, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for your time, your commitment and your service. I know this is a rather thankless job, and I appreciate you being here, putting in the long nights. Second of all, I think you should be very, very proud of your planning and zoning commission and that subsequent wind task force. Sorry, my name is Catla Harper. I have property just above Commissioner Fox's head over there in Turkey Valley. Thank you, Commissioner Clement. You should be very proud of those two bodies. Their process was thorough, professional, and exhaustive. Please don't be buffaloed. One thing that I've seen in speaking to multiple representatives from other schools, the money doesn't stay local, pretty much goes into a slush fund to go fund Sioux Falls or other large state projects. So I must ask you, if no power, nor sizable economic benefit, nor significant job growth stay local, aren't we being used as a means to an end? I am not a means to an end. Neither is my family, my future, nor the piece of ground that I have been left. Your constituents are speaking, are you listening? Please pass Article twenty-six as is, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. Timing is crucial, isn't it? I was waiting for that young lady to come up here because she is a former student of mine. I am living the dream, my name is Tina Lee. I am living the American dream. I just retired as ivory macanda teacher. And I am lucky enough to have three former students here fighting for their life, for their family, and for this South Dakota and country. It's hard for me to stand up here and plead or ask for guidance because as a South Dakotan, we always take care of ourselves. And I am now going to be a daycare provider for three grandchildren under the age of two because we all know that, you know, we don't have that. And I am right in the colored art at the top of this map. And you have to remember that these are squares, these are quarters. And so I am right here. I will be surrounded by at least eight within a quarter mile. I'm not talking about one windmill giving me shadows and flashes at night or vibrations on the ground when I go out to play with my three grandchildren because in South Dakota, we live outside. And I don't want to have to tell them why the birds disappear that we feed, why the little tree frogs, why everything that we touch and focus on with our hands disappears. I'm not talking about one, and I'm not talking just about myself. I apologize for this comment, but shit runs downhill. And I am at the top of this, and I'm at the top of the iceberg. But I am trying to get people to understand, and we have, we have all been here letting you know that you were elected to represent us, and we have nothing against you. You are the ball. I taught that, that corn and soybeans and everything grow from a seed. Trees grow from a seed, weeds grow from a seed. Windmills do not grow from a seed. Livestock comes from eggs, chickens, cows, everything. My three grandchildren. And what's missing here, I think, is at the very core and the very lowest, is our children. And that's why I brought up my students. What do I have, what do you have to give them? It's supposed to be great faces for great places. Guess what, those great faces aren't our fresh one. They're you and you and you and you. So thank you, please protect me.
Again, looking for more speakers?
I'm Becky McManus, and I live down below in Yankton County, near Volin. I just wanted to talk about the job creation that's been brought up by this project. And I want to share that those jobs are not jobs that are going to keep our children here or our families here. They're built by people mostly that just come into the area and leave, and leave these towers behind. And then crews have to come in and fix them. I know this firsthand because the beautician that I used to go to downtown, who lived here, grew up in the Byward area and had a great business here. I still miss her today, but her husband got a job on wind turbines. And she had to leave, get in her camper with her four children and travel around the country. So if we think this is job creation, it's not. I would urge you to listen to the task force, and just as everyone said tonight, please consider the ramifications of your decision. Thank you for your service, appreciate it.
I'm not seeing anybody jump up, so at this time we'll close comments. Mr. Trump, how do you wanna go over the ordinance that's proposed? Do you want to do that tonight?
Well, there's, I just have a few small things that I was reading, and I don't think it changes anything. But if we're gonna adopt this, we need to have it as close to perfect as we can get.
Sure.
And so I have just some things on like definitions. It talks about small energy conversion systems. And the end result at the end says fifty KW, and which is primarily intended to reduce onsite, to reduce onsite consumption of utility power. And the one thing I thought about is, I know there's a lot more off-grid happening. And could we make that definition slightly better if we just eliminated and which primarily intended to reduce onsite consumption of power? Because what we wanted to, I think the intent of the commission was to not regulate small wind energy, right?
We're not doing what, the whole trick is to talk instantly.
I don't know how I could get this any closer than I am now.
I think mostly because, I think we put that in there mostly because a lot of those systems don't provide all power.
Sure.
And so, you know, and, you know, you don't also want to get into the thing of, oh, you can only have that if you don't have electricity access already or something like that. So that's, you know, primarily intended to reduce onsite consumption of utility power while having zero or going to zeros every notch or two. So I think you're covered, and I think it's just being thorough, yes.
The only situation I'd see is hopefully, you know, if we without this, this is around for a long time. Most of us aren't gonna be here in ten years or twenty years. And when this gets looked at and somebody comes in and says, I want to do something off-grid, are they gonna meet that definition? Because they will not be primarily, it will not be primarily intended. So I think we could accomplish everything we need to by just deleting that last line, keeping everything else, and then that would cover off-grid.
I think off-grid is already covered in that statement.
And which is primarily intended to. I think that would make it better though. And then substation was another one. And I like the definition, but it says facility to convert electricity produced by wind turbines. We, we're adding a definition into our zoning ordinance about substations, but we also have substations that aren't ramped by wind, so what would we call those? And that would be just a little correction.
Yeah, I agree with that one.
Yeah, and because, you know, it's a definition, and the way it's presented now, it only covers the substance of wind turbines. I mean, that's just a minor change that I don't think changes anything but makes it better. So, no, I don't want to delete it, I'll just say, "Substation definition shall mean any electrical facility to convert electricity," delete "produced by wind turbines" and just have "to convert electricity to a voltage generator." And then that way it covers. And then that way it covers not only things from wind turbines, but solar, gas, everything.
I agree on that one.
Hey, that's a first. So... That was some of the main ones I have. I did have another one on twenty-six fifteen B that talks about all construction road work. I agree with the state D A N R permit, the permit for disturbing two acres or more. That makes sense. But here it talks about an NPDEDES permit, and that's the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. Those are only really required for municipal sanitary systems. So I get what they were saying, but I believe that if somebody's here could let us know, I believe they meant the D A N R, what is it called here? That permit for if you disturb more than two acres.
Which one are you looking at?
Two-six-one-five B. Because it talks about an NPDEDES, NDDEDES permit. Those permits are used for sanitary, I know this from my time on James River. Those are wastewater systems by cities. And I don't know if that would apply. Twenty-six fifteen... Twenty-fifteen B mitigation members, mitigation members measures. It talks about B at the end, all construction road work and site development must work to meet the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System NPDEDES permit requirements. And the NPDEDES is discharge of municipal wastewater systems. So I think they meant the D A N R stormwater permit. Does that make sense?
That might make sense.
Yeah.
Two in a row.
I think I might want to research a little bit more just to understand it more, but I think you might be onto somewhere that we might have.
I think it was just maybe, I'm sure there was some copy and pasting from Article five. And now that is required in some of the other areas.
That would be unrequired for like a cable.
Now, it only applies to point source pollution. So the municipality that, well, for example, when you get a lot of flooding, they're allowed to disturb a certain percent. That is what the NPDEDES permit allows for. And then when you do that, you have to do water samples and then report that back to the state. And I think that's, they meant the D A N R stormwater permit, not the NPDEDES. I don't think that were changed. The intent is to eliminate runoff and be conscious of our environment. Is there anybody from the, did you get, mean NPDEDES? Or did you mean the stormwater runoff? Okay. I guess I don't think we want to require an NPDEDES permit for that.
So you're just saying straight the last sentence?
Yeah, I don't think that's the intent in that permit.
I think permission, yeah.
Okay, yes. Okay, I'll let somebody else talk for a while.
Okay. Admittedly, I'm probably going to make a hundred and fifty enemies real quick here.
I'll slide over.
I hope not. I sat on the task force and I sat on the planning zoning. And because the commission is responsible for making the decisions, I voted in favor of moving the documents forward so we can get to this point in an early as possible period of time. Didn't mean I agreed with everything, but that's the way it is. And why do you don't always get everybody in your team or group to agree? When I read the material that we had presented to us and looked at additional material on my computer and so forth, I realized that I could make a point for taking either side of this issue and backing up with all kinds of studies and evidence that, you know, it's going to make your cattle toastier and hoarder and all those kind of things. Both ways. But what it boiled down to me in the final analysis kind of was that it comes to a value of life issue. And I appreciate everyone's responses that they've made on the quality of life that they enjoy here, and I recognize that. But on the other side of the thing, I see that as a government entity, we have some responsibility to ensure that we can keep our costs as low as we can, keep our income as high as we can, that we can agree to do some things that maybe we personally really don't want to do. But you all got to remember, there's twenty-four thousand, I heard, I use twenty-three thousand, people in this county. And I've heard there's percent of ninety-nine percent are total against it. That's not true. There's a ton of people that support it. They aren't here tonight, they don't stand up and come. But they're saying, why wouldn't we want to take the income? Why wouldn't we want to help guarantee a supply of electricity? I have farmer friends in Nebraska that they got their pivots turned off because there wasn't electricity at certain times. I don't want to see any of the people in this county have to turn off their heat or light. I know you're shaking your ass to say that I'm an idiot, but that's the way I feel. But I can accept it. But anyway, my recommendation is that we should have the setbacks from residents, active church, business, schools, and game production areas at thirteen hundred feet for participating and at twenty-seven hundred feet for non-participating. Lakes and rivers, I'd leave that at what was in the recommendation. Municipalities, I'd leave that as the recommendation. Right away, I would go, right away, I'd go one thirteen hundred and fifty feet from the property line to the nearest tower. And I'd go for participating. And I'd go twenty-seven hundred feet from the property line for non-participating. There's some other minor things that I'd probably make a recommendation on, but I think that'll start the discussion. Because when we get down to, is this right or that right? Or is this study right or that study right? We all know, everybody can develop studies. What we got to decide is, in the long run, do we need energy production? Well, you say not wind, but I also say, I'll bet you will have way more people when we say we're going to bring in nuclear power. You'll have way more people here saying, no way, no way, not here. So anyway, those are my comments.
Well, I'll follow on your comments then. So just on your numbers and based on what we have in the ordinance then, be the increasing participating setback from, you know, a maximum of nine hundred feet to a maximum of thirteen hundred feet.
Which one, residents?
For residents, non-participating. Because right now, we have a set tower height six hundred feet, which is the maximum. So that would be at a one point five nine, nine hundred feet. And then we're going to then, attention, you're suggesting going from a two mile setback on non-participating, that's roughly about a half mile.
Well, I have a question. Why are the setbacks different for windmills than they are for people? Because the odor travels around. The windmills do not. But they, as I understand, there's issues, flickering, and why not keep them all the same?
I agree with the setback at non-participating fifteen hundred feet.
What?
Total. What are D twenty?
That's what NextEra had suggested to us, that not.
I understand that. Look, it's at two miles, and I would.
So you're suggesting that setback?
I'm suggesting thirteen twenty, like our cable and solar setback is standard.
Or? The whole thing? Or?
For both.
For participating?
For non-participating and for participating. Participating would be, I would say thirteen twenty on that also. That way we are the same as what we are in all other organizations.
I think that's a bad idea because these are very different things. And I do like the idea of basing the setbacks on tower height because right now, we have towers that are, you know, six hundred or, I think, I think when I looked at them, roughly, they're like five fifty. I think the average out there right now.
There are ones that are typically like six hundred fifty.
Like maybe six hundred fifty. They're growing, but there's also other technologies. I think there's some people who look at shorter towers and different things. I've read lots of different things about a lot of different technologies. And if we start creating, some of these rules could just eliminate possibly even better technologies than wind towers that are still wind technology. So I kind of like the idea of staying to that one point five because that's really the, you know, aesthetically for everyone. That is what really affects them is that you've got huge towers that is going to be on your landscape. And that's what we hear all the time. And so, I don't know, I like the idea of sticking to the tower height multiplication factor. In fact, that's, you know, when we looked at all the different ordinances in all the counties across the United States that I, you know, I got a whole imperative list from the Department of Energy, you know, that was a very, that was a very common way of setting up these setbacks was a multiplier of tower height. And in that, the tower heights, you know, the very minimum was one point one in counties. And they went up and to the maximum of one point five in typical setback. That's kind of what's your, what you say, median range of availability for someone else.
So roughly, you're talking thirteen hundred feet today. Might be greater at some time down the road.
It also opens up the possibility that you could introduce that a new technology that doesn't have this as tall, which would make sense. You don't want to shoot yourself in the foot over, you know, increased frequency factors.
Ryan, would you propose a one point five?
I'm thinking, I think we should stick to the one point five, which is actually less than Don's thirteen hundred feet, one point five for participating.
And the only reason I say that because our ordinance right now is thirteen twenty. And so we'd actually be, these ordinance would be, have less of a setback than what we currently have.
For participating?
Well, in Article twenty-six number section twenty-five oh five, section five.
You're talking about our current ordinance.
Our current ordinance.
Current ordinance. And I've talked about our revised ordinance that we got from the board.
Yeah, and I guess we have to, you know, measure on, this Article twenty-six is in the proposal. This is our proposed one. And at least for me, I don't think we should have less setbacks than we currently have. That's kind of where I.
Okay, well, and that's, you're right, to be true. And you don't, and this document that NextEra provided us here too, they didn't have to cause a four thousand feet. And we say one point five times or thirteen hundred feet, whichever is greater.
Maybe a minimum distance.
I still like, I still like the idea of believing it open just in the sense of, you know, the true, when far like the study, the true safety factor was one point five, you know?
And I get that, so right now, you saw right everything, thirteen twenty. But towards one point five, fifteen twenty, eighteen hundred. If the tower's six hundred.
Yes, and that's what is in the proposal from our planning and zoning right now.
So we already have three, we already have one that we have, and then we have the foundation one, and then we have.
So, yes, so.
So your suggestion, it could be four hundred and fifty feet closer.
And I'm suggesting sticking with what the planning and zoning gives us right now for participating, one point five times a point five.
But if it's four hundred and fifty feet, that'd be nine hundred.
Not.
Oh, one point five.
One point five.
Sorry, I was just doubling my math.
One point five times six hundred.
Yes.
Nine hundred feet.
Which makes it closer.
I do, yes, I do. Yes, yes. And that's for a participating resident, so, you know, they have signed up, they are getting money off that, you know, so. And that is, I think, you know, beyond that, you're just kind of padding in extra distance without really adding in a factor of safety, I think. So, but on the other hand, on the non-participating, that's what we do want to have on larger setbacks.
So why would you want to have a larger setback on non-participating wind towers? And like Juan said, more so than cables or solar farms?
Or, okay, for example, if you're building a cable on your farm, then these setbacks should be, I would not want to have a huge setback to deal with from my own residence. I'm, it's my cable I want.
I understand that.
You understand that?
Non-participating.
And now it's non-participating. Currently, we're at two miles on this ordinance here. But Don suggested twenty-seven hundred, you suggested thirteen twenty, which is significant to my son. Half mile, quarter mile. I spent a lot of time in the last six months going to wind farms in Minnesota, Nebraska, Iowa, every time I traveled. Going to the route, going to the wind farms, stopping, taking a look around, turning off the vehicle, really see. And my personal opinion, I would want to live, if I'm not actively participating, I would want to live closer than a half mile to it, which is closer to Don's recommendation. But I also have a hard time asking all these folks up here to, you know, accept what I accept. You know, that's just my personal opinion, you know?
And you have your opinion and I have mine.
And they all have their.
They have their opinions and people outside have their opinions also.
So.
But you're supposed to listen to us.
Windmills got wind turbines up there, you shouldn't even be talking about this. It's a massive controversy.
This, what we're talking about today has nothing to do with that. We're talking about an ordinance that's going to be in place forever.
Exactly. And you're not biased because you're related to him?
No, I'm not biased because he's getting them because that does not include anything that's happening right here. Not for, not for NextEra.
Sorry, they apply within the old ordinance. This is for moving forward.
This has nothing to do with these people sitting here or that map. They're already approved. They're not approved yet, no. But they've applied. So this ordinance will not be, unless their C P is turned down, this ordinance will not apply to them at this point.
Shouldn't have it earlier. Shouldn't have it quicker instead of what you're asked to do.
That's, that's really easy to say. But that was one of the easiest ones to say, yeah.
Yeah. Actually, I have right near your yard, put one right beside your house.
You guys all said you don't want it in the backyard.
Why don't you all put it right by your place?
Put it right outside.
Put it down by the lake.
Okay, so, okay, so, so public comment has been closed. There will be another meeting on, in two weeks, so public comment will be available at that point in time also. We've got, as a, as a commission right now, we've got, we need to take the opportunity to go through this, discuss what's gonna happen, what we're gonna do here, and come up with a plan, so we know what we're gonna do in two weeks to, to either pass it as is, make the changes that we feel that we need to make, for the betterment of twenty-three thousand other people also. We got, we got a hundred and fifty here, so I'm sorry, it's not twenty-three thousand, it's twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty people. That, that we also have to consider what their thoughts are.
But they're not, they're not.
They don't live there.
You have to have a term in there.
But Don just said that, you gotta support all these farmers, where are they? They're not here, never here. Are they real, or are they made up in the net? I mean, they're made up in the net.
That's a decision that we have to make.
Exactly.
And we have to live with the decision that we're gonna make.
Yeah, so do we.
I understand that, you have to live with the decision that, that is being made in this workplace right here. Just like the cable ordinance was made three and a half years ago, four years ago. Everybody in this room, except for a few, have to live with that ordinance. And they can't build a cable because of the open setback that was put in place. So.
Mr. Chair. I don't think one thing that's said tonight, we have heard two or three times in the last six months. My suggestion would be that we have another meeting very soon, in two or three days. Hammer out what we want between us, put it out so the public can see it, by the next week, and go there.
Well, I think maybe, since for that tonight, we can just go through and say for one, we don't have to agree tonight yet.
That's, that's correct.
And like, let's, let's do get some of our thoughts now, so that we can go back and.
My, my understanding was that that's the reason for the first reading, if we go back.
And that's what we were doing.
Yeah. Yeah, if, 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 it really takes the reduction in nonparticipating uh, residences. I mean, I, I, I go back and I think about again the people who are going to have to live next to these things, and that travel to so many of them. You know, I can, maybe you live with one mile, but I can't, it's really difficult, so that's kind of where I'm at there. And lakes and rivers, one mile, municipalities, two miles. So right away, again, one point five times the tower height, I feel that's the safety factor. Um, a property line, not participating, okay, again, there, I can maybe go to one mile, maybe even a half mile for just a property line or something, residents. Participating, one point five. Um, uh, aren't participating, I just go one point five, but even go one point one, because I think there's less, you know. The only worry is getting events. Um, pipelines and utilities and infrastructure, other than the infrastructure required by the, uh, wind farm would be one point five as well.
Mr. Chair, uh, back to what we were discussing, and, and Rob, you're, you're a legal guidance here, I, I think the process for zoning changes is planning commission, and then two meetings at the county. I don't think we could have another meeting without ten days' notice to get public input, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna move forward, we really probably need to hammer these out, I hate to say it tonight, and then have our final vote after it's been noticed at the next meeting. Adding another meeting, I, I don't, that's not an option.
Correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that's written in codified laws, and how it's always done, and it would be nice to be able to do that, and we just, we will. Laws will follow, and, uh, just, uh, we need to point that out, um.
Ryan, why is it one mile from unis- municipalities, and?
You're looking at, at Eric proposed.
Oh, I was just, I was just looking at that.
Oh, no.
Cause it, it has, it had red lines and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm looking at, what, what was published for the, here.
Well, unfortunately, my kid is nine, um, municipality is two miles.
Municipalities two miles.
So what you're saying is, these guys are already jumped through the hoops, what you decide after the fact, they don't have to go by it. Their setbacks are already set.
No.
No, that's what we're talking about, setbacks.
Well, they weren't, they weren't.
NextEra has put in an application that would be, they put it in on July eighth, that would be under the old ordinance. So that is, that is the situation there.
So they're, they're good.
Unless the zoning board doesn't approve it, or it's possible.
They still have to go through the planning and zoning board, as well as coming here as well.
I'm sorry, I'm a son.
Those will be a, another day for another meeting.
I, I think probably the most important issue that's gonna affect people is the setbacks. The rest of this is, is good, there's not a lot of.
Can I throw some low knee print in there?
Well.
I'm sorry, I, I.
The NextEra's suggestion?
Well, I, I guess I'd just like to say that, um, and, and give me a second, then you can talk, is, uh, once we get these setbacks hammered out, or, you know what, maybe, I'd like to keep it bigger, other people wanna keep it smaller. We're gonna have to vote on it, and then the majority's gonna, gonna rule, that's how it is, and then we can go through some of this other stuff. But setbacks, I think, are.
Well, I think that's the biggest, that's the biggest issue is the setbacks.
Arguing, I think, at this point, but I would like to connect, if we can, if we can, if we go up, there are a few things I saw here, um, that I did like. On the first one, um, within section twenty-six fifteen, on the noise, adding in the phrase behind the B V As of average A weighted sound pressure. It's a good idea, just because that defines the frequency range.
So you like the yellow?
No, just the phrase.
Where are you at, where are you at, Ryan?
On an unnumbered page.
Change numbers, guys, there.
Twenty-six fifteen.
L.
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 Twenty-six fifteen.
There is L, it's on the very end, so behind forty-five D B and thirty-five D B, we would have average A weighted sound pressure. That's defining the frequency range of that, of that noise.
Just, just that phrase?
Yep.
Into the line out there.
So, that, that, that makes a much more clearer definition of that, of what exactly it is that you don't have arguments.
I'm, I'm just a simple country boy, um, so I don't know what an A weighted sound pressure is.
It's a, it's a, it's a weighting of the frequency ranges that is, uh, that, that is, uh, most suitable to the human hearing.
So, if we set it at, at forty-five, is it, that, then what?
So, it's a sound, a sound wave, a sound wave that is outside of the audible human ear is not considered, or is considered at a lower rate, or a lower weight.
So Ryan, in the line out part, you want to add after D B?
At, B V A, average.
Well, the one, the one that's lined out says D B, it doesn't say B V A, so you wanna put B V A in there, and then stick in average A weighted sound pressure.
Yeah.
Do you, does it stop there, or is it continue on? At off-site, nonparticipating?
No, just that, alright.
How do we, how do we?
I like, I like the way we have our phrases still, um, in terms of giving us all points and I do like our B V A levels yet. Um, this room tonight has ranged from thirty-four D B to eighty-one D B. So on the very, very quiet times, we are down, um, under forty D B, D B. So.
How would, how would we measure, cause if we're gonna put that in as a, a rule, how would we do that?
But that's gonna be, because that, that's a, most sound meters are gonna be A weighted. So you're measured with the sound meter.
So then you probably need to also put in an order, uh, enforcement.
And that's where it's a lie, and that's.
So we're left with three people who have tested.
That's, yeah, exactly, that's the problem, it's an enforcement, so let's, and that's why I wanted to add that in there, is that clarifies it, enforcement, at least a little bit better. Because that clarifies, clarifies the measurement.
All the way to nonparticipating residents?
Just adding average A weighted sound pressure to those, to the measurements of forty-five D B, A, and thirty-five.
When we go forty-five, we all stop to. When we go forty-five, D B A, go first. You said we were down to thirty-four, you said we were down to thirty-four when it was quiet, and when everyone was clapping, we were at eighty.
Yeah.
Change.
So.
So, if we go forty-five, at, at, uh, older places, uh, participating and nonparticipating.
If you mean forty-five at particip- given our current ordinance, if you mean forty-five at participating, there is gonna be a third participant or participating. Um, so then you thought of that.
I, I could see a, I could see a value, if, if somebody's participating, just like we have in this.
Yeah.
So we could go fifty on participating and forty-five on nonparticipating.
Hmm, I bet, I could go, if you really, really feel like we need to increase, I would not go any higher than forty on nonparticipating.
Forty or fifty?
Forty.
On nonparticipating?
On nonparticipating, we're right now at, at that point.
Well, you definitely require your, your nonparticipating residents, yes.
A quiet conversation should be able to be had, at a nonparticipating residence, is what I'm saying.
I, I think the question that we have to arrive at here, before we argue on some of these issues, is whether we want to regulate any possibility of a wind power system coming into the county, or whether we wanna set up something that may work, uh, for both sides. And I'm for the latter.
That's what I'm saying, listen, the, do forty-five, fifty are participating, forty-five are not.
I'm not saying forty, I'm not, I can do fifty, forty.
I'm buying fifty out of forty-five, fifty.
We need a motion to, of each one of these, or what do we wanna do?
We need to have insurance, or what you want to change.
We can't.
Now, I think, maybe, maybe what we should, we should maybe move, give you guys time to digest, move this meeting to the next meeting, and still consider the first reading on this ordinance. That's what I think we should do.
Cause we could still make changes on the next meeting.
Yeah.
But then that would still be considered the first reading.
Yeah, let's just do that, because, that'll give you guys time to kind of digest where we are.
We don't have to make changes tonight.
We have the look over all the material, you'll feel more comfortable on how you wanna move forward. And we're moving it, then we'll discuss it the next.
I wanna.
Consider that a first meeting instead of a second.
I wanna, uh, say that, uh, this week, uh, Gary presented us, uh, the requirements at Huron and Brookings, right? And both of them were considerably below what I, what I recommend to, to change, considerably lower.
Are you talking?
Distance.
Setbacks, or are you talking noise?
Oh, they had, no, setbacks. I don't, I didn't read what their noise is, but. They mean, they add noise in there.
Sorry, well, okay, I had a couple of, of, and if, if you wanted to go through all these, that's where we can all digest, I think, and, and then come back to.
I have one question, first reading, so we'll do, this'll be a first reading, the next meeting will be a first reading, and then there'll be a second reading after that one, and that's fine. That, that was just one question.
So, the other one, um, the other one was on that twenty-nine seventeen, I believe, uh, you mentioned it, and that phrase that you guys included there, I do, I do agree with that, uh, uh, some type of transfer to a subsidiary, where the, essentially, the primary ownership hasn't changed, should be allowed, so, that's something that I would probably have, uh, defer to Rob and Juan and more, to make sure that that's what we want.
And not just handed off.
Yeah.
So approving the highlighted?
Highlighted, yes, oh, I think so, that I wanted, Rob and Juan to take us to that. Make sure that was that, and, uh.
I kinda like the idea, though, how, how the planning commission had it, that if, if there is gonna be a major change, they can always come in, and, you know, the board of adjustment can always approve it, and the, the, the whole reason, I think, is to, you know, we're dealing with these people, and, you know, when this started in twenty nineteen, it was Orion, and then it was somebody else announced, these guys suggested the last.
That would be a major shift in ownership, and, and I do, I do understand, like, some of these large companies, it's like, you got your, you got your instruction subsidiary, and you got your operating subsidiary, you got another private subsidiary that might be doing decommissioning, and so, it's like that transfer of the assets, which kind of segments of this business, and, and, uh, so I think, I think that does make sense, because the spirit of this is that we wanna be still talking to the same owners, the end owners, so. As long as that spirit is still captured there, but then still allows.
And I, I'm not saying this is, I, I like it, but I, you know, I've, I've seen, you know, before, where oth- other industries, they, they set up, and then they sell it to somebody else, and then they sell it to this small group, and then this small group goes bankrupt, you know, I don't.
But we're talking about, not selling, we're talking about transfers within the same company, so, within the same overall corporation.
I just, I like to do business with the people that are here, and not somebody else down the road. That's how I feel about it.
Well, if it's a company, it's not really a person. And a lot of times, the people in the companies change anyway, so.
And then the last one I had out here that I kinda like too, is, and it's just the one line of twenty-six fifteen, um, twenty-six fifteen A, the.
Above ground?
No, not the above ground, just the one line of removal of the access roads, gates, fences, will be of the discretion of the landowner. Um, I think that's something that might be okay. I can imagine, I can, just the line, removal of access roads, gates, and fences will be of the discretion of the landowner.
Which, which one?
Page two, if it had a page number.
The landowner, yeah, it's, and the decommissioning.
Where, where do you, what, what is it?
Uh, section fifteen, A, Plan A, A A.
Page two, yeah.
Is what they have.
Follow along.
I don't have page numbers.
I know, let's pretend we have page numbers, turn that page.
Is this, are you talking site, site claims?
It's, yeah, it's, it's, decommissioning is my, oh.
That's a different number.
Yeah, decommissioning, it doesn't have a number.
What, what is the number of, of?
Let's see, let's see, let's see that.
Decommissioning, I guess, was.
Twenty-six fifteen, section A.
It's under is twenty-six fifteen.
Section A.
Yeah, they have it numbered down there, so, um, twenty-six fifteen, decommissioning, plan. And adding that phrase in there, I, I think that was, that makes sense. If a landowner actually doesn't want the roof removed, and there's no point in removing, or the fences, or he doesn't want the fences removed, I think the fence is in there. And I think that should be.
I agree with what you're saying, but I can't find it.
Yeah, whatever the current landowner is.
Uh, you know, a- along with thi- this, uh, something that I saw, um, looking at the maps, and it's something we gotta be very specific about, cause I, I know when I went to Bon homin county and talked to some of those guys, there are some of these. there are some of these towers that are, are coming up in the CUP that are proposed, and they're on section line roads. And at least in the case of Bon Home County, when they approved it, then that tower company made the county, at the county expense, open those section line roads. And I think it just needs to be perfectly clear from the beginning, if there's a section line road that's gonna be used for a wind tower, that it's their responsibility to pay, because that was a, a big break I got from some of those guys as they approved the CUP, and then they said, okay, now, county, um, you have to spend fifty, sixty, whatever amount it is, to open up this section line road to then access that tower, and that's, that's not what anybody wants.
Yeah, I don't know if you have any cases of that, but I.
Yeah, they have some in Bon Home, yeah.
Well, I mean, and, and our.
We, we do in that packet that we just got, where, where there'll be a tower located, now that section line's not open, but they can then petition for it to open to us, in, in, at least in Bon Home County's case.
Yes, I do agree.
Then the county's what, and, so just to be clear on that, I, I do.
That would be something in the road hall agreement?
That, that should just be something in the CUP process that we're perfectly clear, if a section line has to be opened, it's not at the county's expense. And I think that's fair. I, I did have, um, since you brought it up, I'm decommissioning and termination of use, it kinda talks about, um, uh, the landowner and having some, some liability, and, you know, I don't know if I support, um, a landowner that in good faith enters this, and something happens, and then the landowner is now responsible for, uh, getting rid of this, uh, if you looked at, I think that's in section E for termination of use, do you disagree with that?
In what section?
Uh, section, decommissioning, section D, termination of use. It's, it's, it's definitely in the packet on.
On the unnumbered page?
Yes. Termination of use, uh, yeah, uh, county is granted to seek conjunctive relief, uh, or reimbursement from the applicant or its successor, the landowner for decommission, cause we gotta remember, uh, maybe one of these, this landowner enters into this agreement in good faith, okay, and his heirs, who had nothing to do with, then acquired the land. Something happens with the company, we hope this never happens, but it goes bankrupt, and, and now this says that the county is gonna go after the landowner? I, I just don't know if I agree with that.
Well, the county could put a lien on the landowner, but the, now, the, you have to read into that whole.
Yeah.
That, that whole decommissioning plan with the idea that, is that, uh, the money for decommissioning will have, uh, should have a combination of bonds and escrow, right?
So, but then do, are we gonna, are we gonna need to go half?
And so that, that scenario.
But isn't the landowner getting the rent all these years, so shouldn't he have some?
Those monies, those monies that they're now, that are possibly available to the landowner to, to do the worst, when, say, the worst-case scenario, the company that built the wind farm is no longer.
To, to want those, I mean, they get the money, but it costs them a lot to have, to farm around those roads and those towers and twenty-four and thirty-six row planters and stuff, it's just.
Do you have a, isn't that what they, they signed up for, when they signed up to build wind towers?
No.
They built the wind tower, I guess you better farm around it.
I guess, I guess that would be true, if you do twenty years ago, that you would have twenty-four row planters now.
But we're not talking twenty years ago, we're talking now.
I, I get what you're saying, I, I just don't like the county being placed into the position.
I agree with that.
Where in, due to no, uh, fault of the landowner or his heirs or whoever, then the county has an obligation to literally go after these people, place a lien on their property, and make them, I mean, it's, if it's a million and a half dollars now, what is it gonna be in twenty years? I, I, I just don't, I don't like that, that these people could be inheriting in land and then have to pay for the sins of his authority, I, I don't like the county being in a position where we're going after landowners, I don't think that's good.
If the company disappears, county disappears, and then you're left with these wind, uh, wind towers sitting on a piece of property that no one wants, who's gonna clean it up?
I'm sorry? Thought somebody said something.
I, I get what you're saying, I just don't like the county to be the one that is, we're, we're literally gonna probably have to.
You're saying you don't want the county, and then you say you don't want the landlord, who do you want to be responsible?
And again, that is the whole reason, that is the whole reason, that there is, there is the whole plan to have money set aside for decommissioning, so that the county isn't left high and dry, and shop any money to do this.
Then do we need to have that in there, that the county, if all those safeguards fail, then the county is in a position to do, to put a lien on the landowner's property? I, I just don't like that if there's already safeguards, I think.
We're talking about an ugly situation, yes, no one likes it.
I, I get.
I like Rob's suggestion that we, uh.
Retrue it.
That we, uh, think about some of these changes and, and reschedule, uh, the next meeting, sort of where phase one, because we're, we, we can sit here until three o'clock in the morning and talk about this, this, uh, we've all heard twenty-five times.
One comment on one of the first notes, uh, we got a note that says that NPDES does pertain to any discharge of pollutants, including stormwater into the US waters, so.
But, but. The Clean Water Act has changed that definition of it, I worked in stormwater for years.
Maybe she needs to come up here.
I talk, I talk about, I work in stormwater, maybe.
Just turn that way.
Yeah.
For years, and I don't know if the terminology or the guidelines or the rules have changed for the Clean Water Act, but that is one of the things that needs to be looked at, there's a ten thousand dollar a day fine if there's a violation of it. So, that's something that you need to seriously consider and look at as to how that's going to play into this, but as I said, I have it been involved now for ten years, so I'm not sure how that has changed.
And, and is that for a point source?
That's for any point source, yes, any point source, that's.
But would, would.
In this discharge.
Would clearing land, though, be considered a point source?
That, I don't know, that.
I, I don't, I've, I've never seen an NPDES permit on anything except for, you know, municipality.
For clearing land, it is, because I used to have.
NPDES?
Yes, I had to do that for, um, building, construction sites and towns.
So, where is the freight coming from?
Like.
Where's the point source coming from?
Depending on what it is, it could be, could be, it could be a patho, it could be a city, it could be stormwater.
Let, let's look on that, could you guys provide us some, some of that for the NPDES?
Just wanted to bring that to attention, don't drop that out, I'll tell you.
I think we decided we're not, we're changing anything tonight, we're just gonna get some of these first discussions in, but, you know, I'll think about it, pardon.
And, and keep in mind, they are, um, the decommissioning is scheduled according to the ordinance, that there's a fifty percent of the de, the estimated decommissioning is put into a escrow account in the Anken County in the company's name, and the other fifty percent is set up by a surety bond, and that surety bond decreases annually, according to, in the escrow.
Yeah, I have to read through that again, but, it's sort of scheduled so that essentially, on a long-lived project, the idea is it's all an escrow.
Are we good for this, or?
Get quickly.
Yep.
Yeah. I, I don't know if I can make any else, just go to the camera at the moment.
All right, need a motion to adjourn into executive session. A motion by Dan, second by Juan, to move into executive session for personnel.
Number.
Rob, is there a forelead? Call favor, hi? Hi.